How are you?
Good.
Is it all right?
Yeah.
How are you doing?
How are you?
How are you doing? Everybody all right?
Yep.
Same thing, it's push to talk for everyone except for you.
Okay. As long as he has five people.
And he'll get the 10 minutes.
If he has five people. Hi. Hi. Hey.
See, good. I didn't drink today.
Yeah.
Well, actually, oil. That you know.
Got him in the car, but I can't win.
After.
After.
No, after.
After that presentation. Okay.
Before we, yeah, before we.
Yep, good, okay. Good morning. Uh, welcome to, um, Drew Street and our, uh, Public Works Facility. Uh, this is where we have both our traffic control center. If you get a chance after the meeting to drop down to the first floor and look at it, it's one of my, what I call, one of my babies. And, um, back in 2000, I went to Phoenix and the Federal Highway Administration had four test beds for, um, intelligent transportation systems. And I walked into the Phoenix, uh, Traffic Control Center, I was like, I want one of these and it's gonna happen in Pinellas County. So, anyway, um, a few reminders, uh, please silence your cell phones. Uh, restrooms are in the back of the building and there are directional signs in case you need to find them. For those around the table, you'll, my microphone's gonna be the only live one. And so if you wish to speak, just please hold up your hand and then you'll need to press the button so that we can hear you. Um, and then push it off again when you're done. We don't want any shrill audio feedback issues. Okay, for our speakers who will be presenting from the podium, your microphone will be on at all times, so you don't need to do anything to that. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Burton and welcome, everybody.
Well, good morning. Um, so as part of this discussion, we were really trying to frame, and I was trying to frame about how we go about having a discussion regarding the TDC funds and whether there are other uses or, or strategies we have. I'm supposed to push mine too, there we go. Barbara was jumping up and down in the back.
I'm gonna turn mine off, because I can.
So, as part of trying to frame this, uh, I'd originally asked Michael Zosta to, to give us a legal framework, with changes in the law. But then I learned that about a year ago, exactly, a year ago, um, Ford Pinellas really come forward and Witt gave a presentation on that, that change in law, but not everybody got a chance to hear that. So to begin the discussion, I've asked Michael to begin by giving us a framework of the, the, uh, legal structure and what's open, and then I've asked Witt to kinda give him overview about tourism and some of the concepts that he gave a year ago. And I figured that would be a good way to frame it and then we'll just open it up for a discussion between, uh, the county commissioners and the TDC members regarding the topic. So, Michael?
Good morning, commissioners, council members, Mr. Administrator. Uh, this will hopefully be a brief overview, because I know many of you have heard this on several, uh, occasions, so, starting with the PowerPoint, if I may, there we go. The presentation will include a brief overview of the tourist development tax and the legal framework, a discussion of recent statutory amendments, and also a discussion of the current plan and what it provides for, as well as potential next steps, hopefully to guide the discussion as far as BCC directive. As you know, Pinellas County, uh, tourist development tax is a 6% tax that's based on accommodations or rentals of six months or less, um, in accordance with the statute. In fiscal year 2018, the tourist development tax generated approximately $60 million and approximately 98% of those dollars are paid by out-of-county visitors. The tourist development statute is authorized and governed by 125-0104. The statute requires a creation of a tourist development plan, which we do have, the tourist development council, and the statute also sets forth the legal framework as far as the, um, intended uses and authorized uses of those funds. The next slide, and I apologize, it might be a little small, is basically what I did was I grouped the actual percents, um, by uses and set forth those uses. Uh, as many of you know, that the statute required that the ordinances, the, excuse me, that the tax was initially levied and imposed pursuant to adoption of an ordinance by the local governments. Initially, the tourist development tax, uh, tax statute was set forth, uh, you could adopt up to a 2% tax, and it's set forth, the uses in that first box. And then over time, they levy, the, they authorized the levy of the third, fourth, fifth, and ultimately the sixth percent tax. In Pinellas County, we finally reached the milestone to levy that 6%, and that was done. Um, as you see in the box, the first, second, third, and if you look at the bottom, the 6%, they are all the same uses. So pretty much promotion and advertising, funding CVBs, and a myriad of capital projects, as well as beach nourishment. The fourth and fifth also allow for promotion, advertising, and tourism, so all of the percents always default to that, but they also provide for debt services for certain purposes for professional sports. I also noted, um, that, um, in, when some of these ordinances were adopted, because a lot of times we don't pay a lot of attention to these, or they don't get as much focus, because they're our ordinances, the third percent, um, tax when it was levied intended for a half of it to go towards beach nourishment, and the fifth percent was to be used for promotion, advertising, and marketing. That's all done through the budgeting process and under our plan. The current tourist development plan, uh, was adopted in November of 2015. That was at the direction of the BCC to try to simplify the plan. The current plan now has five categories, they're set forth in the PowerPoint. The, uh, main difference in the plan is that the plan now allocates 60% of the tourist development tax dollars to go for, uh, promotion and advertising, which is captured pretty much in, in, in categories A and B, and then the remaining 40% is allocated for capital-type projects. The plan also, after much discussion, carried over a consolidated section that recognized the then-existing capital funding commitments, ongoing obligations, and that still is there, and it further provides that the TDC, in part of what they do as an advisory board to the BCC, would on, in five-year intervals, look at the plan, make recommendations to the BCC as to whether there was any recommended revisions. Currently under the plan, elite events are provided for an up-to amount of $2 million a year, excuse me. Um, the Dali Museum is also funded out of that and recognized because that was a pre-plan revision, uh, funding obligation. The Clearwater Spring Training Facility, which will be satisfied in February of 2021. And while no longer specifically provided for in the plan, uh, as a matter of budgeting, the board's direction is to allocate half of the percent towards beach nourishment, and that is obviously subject to change according to, you know, BCC, uh, needs and the BCC direction. Existing commitments that are not included in the plan, and this is just listing the last capital, um, projects that went through the first capital funding program cycle, and those are Clearwater Marine Aquarium, the Blue Jays, City of Dunedin Blue Jays Spring Training, Ruth Eckert Hall, the American Craftsman Museum, the City of Clearwater Eddie Seymour Complex, and the Countryside Sports Complex. Now, the recent statutory amendments. One of the legislative changes was adding the estuary and lagoon improvements to the subsection that dealt with beach nourishment and shoreline improvements and that, those type of issues. And then the next, uh, pretty big change to the statute is found at 5A6 of the statute, where that basically allows to use the dollars for construction, acquisition of public facilities, and they're laid out as far as what public facilities are. They mean transportation, sanitary sewer, solid waste, drainage, et cetera, facilities that, um, and then, once you establish that you meet that it's a public facility, then there's basically a series of statutory requirements that must be met before you can expend the dollars. Those include, you're spending at least $10 million a year in, uh, tax revenues, um, for those purposes. You have to, um, have a two-thirds majority vote by the BCC. The TDC actually has to recommend the project, which is a little unusual. You also have to have an independent economic impact study that is going to prove that this public facility will increase tourist-related business activities in the county. So those are, it's a little unusual, but that's, those are the requirements before, um, you could, uh, spend the dollars on any of those type of projects. The current tourist development plan, and that's why I brought this up today, does not include these recent statutory amendments. So that is a point of discussion for the BCC and the TDC as to whether or not they wanna give staff direction to bring you back a revised plan that would include these uses. I would also remind everyone that just because it's in the plan doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna be utilized, it's just the first step in making sure that it's available for those uses, if a project came forward that everyone supported as far as the return on investment in promoting tourism. So the BCC policy considerations and directions at this point would be whether to amend the plan to include one or both of the statutory amendments. Uh, a reminder that any tourist development plan amendment would require a, uh, majority plus one vote, so five out of seven of the county commissioners to support that amendment. And then the BCC should also consider as to whether or not we want to continue amending the plan to include new funding obligations, including the last cycle that are not reflected in the plan, so that you have somewhere where they're all located. Um, and that's really just a policy decision. And with that being said, I hope that was brief enough and just kinda gave you the legal construct, and I'll be happy to answer questions. If not, thank you.
Thanks, I was trying to figure out the two-thirds, but Commissioner Justice helped me on the map.
Okay.
So... Previously, you said it had to increase tourism to qualify, and then down under bullet E, it says demonstrates the positive impact. Now, po- positive impact and increasing the, the bed count might be interpreted differently.
Uh, yes, the statute uses both terms. It says forth at the beginning, at the top, where it says to acquire and construct. It says if the public facilities are needed to increase tourist-related business activities, and then it subsequently says, as part of the economic study, that study must conclude that there is a positive impact on the infrastructure project.
And then you're reading positive impact has to include an increase in bed count?
Uh, yes, I think you have to meet both, 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 uh, metrics under the statute, correct.
Second question, real quick. Um, under public facilities, does that fund operating costs or infrastructure only?
It doesn't, um, I believe it would include operation as well, I'm not sure, it's, doesn't address it specifically, uh, no, actually, I'm sorry, it does. It says to acquire, construct, extend, maintain, and operate. So yes, it would include operation. And I know there's a lot of confusion, I've, I've heard that several times, so I'm gonna, uh, take this opportunity. Operation, there's, there seems to be a perception that you can't use some of these dollars for operation, it depends on the project. So, it's not always that you can't, um, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome, sorry about that. Any other questions?
Would a parking structure be tied to transportation?
Um, if it was part of a facility that was a transportation facility, possibly. This is a brand-new section, there's really been no interpretation of it. I did a, uh, search yesterday just to make sure I, there hadn't been a recent, even Attorney General opinions, uh, offered on this particular, uh, revision. I've really found nothing, so it's really gonna be just, uh, an interpretation of the statute, and I think you'd have to look at the project holistically and each element of the project to see, and there might be instances where you have projects that a piece could be funded out of tourist development dollars. So, that's the other thing, it's not an all-or-nothing, uh, proposition necessarily, so there might be aspects of certain projects that are fundable.
I have a question. Mr. Attorney. Um, I've been having this debate with a lot of people, and I'd love to get your opinion, since we're here in the forum. Uh, Commissioner Welch pointed out, to improve room night, uh, production, I think it's gonna be very onerous of us, or whoever's bringing that project forward, to be able to do that. I think in most considerations, um, it's a loss of market share because of what's happened to the infrastructure. Particularly, I can say that for St. Pete Beach, where we're located, you know, I think it's gonna be very difficult to, to directly show that, okay, we did whatever project it was, and it ultimately resulted in more room nights. I think what it's going to show is that, um, it's gonna keep us from further degradating our market share, mostly, but how do you interpret that?
Well, they, in strictly construing the statute, the legislature's presumed to know what they want and say what they mean. They didn't say to maintain and/or increase, they said to increase, so I think it appears that it would have to have that nexus, it would have to be that connection, that it's not just a status quo thing, but that you're using the dollars because it's gonna enhance that, which includes increasing, so.
Mike, why is beach re-nourishment not specified in, with the Board of County Commissioners? You said that it is, beach re-nourishment is not specified in their plan. Why isn't there some kind of, uh, an addendum that it's always there, a specific amount?
There could be, and there used to be, I think it was when they went through the revision, in an attempt to try to simplify the plan, there were certain things that were left out, it could be added, that could be something the TDC could, in reevaluating or the BCC on its own, could say, yeah, let's look at the plan, let's add it. It's just, it was just trying to keep the plan as flexible and simple as possible, but the understanding at the time that it was approved, if I recall correctly, was that it's the staff's function and, uh, a budgeting function to always allocate at the very minimum, that half percent. So, it's still being covered, it's just not specifically addressed in the plan, but it could be.
And I know that the county commission has a commitment to funding that, it was very important to us and to the TDC. Tony?
This is a, kind of a follow-up to Phil's question. Are you interpreting, um, that transportation could include anything? Roads, uh, buses, I mean, is that your interpretation that?
We would have to look at an individual project, I, excuse me, as each project independently, look at the specific elements of the project. Not necessarily, some of the things you articulated don't sound like they probably would be fundable from this, some of it would arguably qualify, so we'd really have to look at the totality of the project, we'd have to look at the economic impact study, and then really kinda drill down as to whether or not we could fund a piece of it or all of it on a specific project. Like, for example, buses, my interpretation thus far has been buses in and of themselves, by themselves, would not be covered.
So it's, it's open to interpretation based upon the overall plan?
Uh, it, it would be, but yes, but I would also be remiss if I didn't remind everyone that taxing statutes are pretty strictly construed, and there's not a lot of wiggle room typically, especially in a statute that specifically enumerates uses. You have to be a little, um, circumspect as far as how you, how far you kind of, uh, expand that, those uses, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Dave, and then Russ.
Thank you, I appreciate the, the presentation. Um, you know, I think a couple of my questions, one were along the lines that Keith was bringing up, and that is, um, for, you know, public facilities. In fact, you lim, you, you mentioned here, uh, limited to, uh, including but not limited to transportation, sanitary, sanitary sewer, solid wa, and I would argue that none of those are positive influences, they were just, if you have put, if you don't have them, you're gonna have negative influences, so. And, uh, on that first sentence, it talks about maintaining or operating a public facility. So I think, again, using those types of, I, I mean, if we don't have those facilities, what do we have to do, go down in, in attendance and, uh, tourism here before we have the argument to increase? That doesn't make any sense, so I think that's something that we have to be pretty strong on. The other one is that, um, I don't see things in here, maybe I, I missed it, but in, uh, expense reimbursement, for instance, our EMS system that, uh, during those tourism months might be, you know, we may have double the calls, and so there's a, a lot of expenses that are related specifically to that, and there, perhaps in some cases, are some expense reimbursement through fees, but for the most part, those are reimbursement. Are those kinds of things, if you can draw the nexus, are those eligible for reimbursement of funds?
Commissioner, unfortunately, the answer would be no, and as a matter of fact, there are provisions in the statute, and I didn't cite those because they don't apply to Pinellas County. There are certain counties because of their population, uh, certain thresholds, and we exceed those populations, so we wouldn't, uh, uh, we couldn't avail ourselves of certain provisions of the statute, that if you have a certain-sized population, that you can, as an offset to the general fund, look into some of these dollars for those kind of increased costs.
Okay. So, so we're just kinda limiting it to cap, it looks like, for the most part, capital and major infrastructure.
Correct, at this juncture, the way the statute's written, yes.
And does any nexus have to be drawn to connect those, those expenses, expenses, or are they just automatically eligible?
Um, they would still require an analysis, because one thing is being eligible, uh, ultimately, uh, in this scenario, with these particular statutory amendments, you'd still need the economic impact study, and there would still be a review by the TDC, a recommendation by the TDC, and.
Well, that's an area I think we're gonna need some clarification on, because those are things, if you don't have, you're gonna plummet in attendance here locally, so I would hate for that to happen first, and then have to fix.
Sure, sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, Michael.
Was received, you're talking about that position, that's basically that this is only used, is eligible to be used or tapped into by a county that generates at least $10 million in tourist development taxes, and we far exceed that, so, yes, yes, yes.
Okay, I'm going in order of the hands that I saw, so Pat's next.
So I'm, I'm hearing a lot of things that aren't eligible, can you, can you give some broad-stroke ideas of what would be eligible?
I thought I was gonna get out of here without that question being asked.
No, sorry.
Uh, it's hard to say, Commissioner, obviously, we're looking to, uh, fund those type of projects that would enhance tourism, so for example, a transportation facility, um, a transfer center might be something that, in a bigger project, may be fundable, for example. It's hard to say, uh, without looking at specifics, but that would be one, there would have to be a nexus and a finding by the board legislatively, that yes, there is definitely a return on investment as far as there's an increase to tourism. As far as one of the factors, there has to be an economic impact study that would support it, the TDC would have to support it, and, um, so, so there are a lot of variables, but yes, there are possibilities, and I certainly am not the one to foreclose them, I interpret the law, I didn't write it, but I would certainly try to work within the constructs of the statutes to find ways to, um, at least present the best case for the BCC and the TDC to evaluate.
Can you think of anything transportation-related that would be eligible?
Well, like I said, a transfer center, let's just say if you had a, a.
Buses or mass transit or whatever.
Exactly, exactly. The facilities supporting it, um, it would probably qualify under this, correct.
So, and to the other question, it could be a public parking facility?
Could be, could be, we'd have to look at it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd have to look at it, but it could be. If you're establishing a transfer center where people are gonna be able to park their automobiles and then jump on that, that might be an aspect of it that we could look at and see, um, certainly.
Something that went back and forth to the airport?
Um...
Tourists.
Uh, possibly, possibly, we'd have to really look at what, the, the part of it that we would be funding, so.
Charlie Gertis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, the way I read the materials, the one-half of the third penny is codified to beach re-nourishment.
Mm-hmm.
So, so by that codification, that allocation gets made annually, I imagine?
Yes.
And then, when, and, and when there's projects, money gets spent, and when there isn't project, money rolls over, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that. Let me ask you, the, the language in the statute that, did estuaries and lagoons get added at the same time?
Yes.
Okay. Is the statute discretionary and says you may include these things, or is this, what I'm concerned about, in terms of the TDC adding it to the plan or not, do we have discretion to not include those things as possible expenditures? Or are we required to include the complete universe of what the legislature has said is eligible? I don't wanna get challenged by somebody that says, the legislature said you should include this, and then you didn't. That's where my lawyer's brain is going.
I would say from a legal perspective, I don't think there's any requirement to include it.
Okay.
You couldn't include things other than what's specifically statutorily specified, but I think it's really a conversation the TDC needs to have with the BCC.
So the legislature's saying, if you also want to include these things, you may.
These are all the stuff you can say, right, right.
Okay.
And again, if, even if it gets added to the plan, just like any other, um, authorized uses in the plan, doesn't mean you have to fund it, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Um, I'm gonna address a couple of things, one, the beach nourishment, for clarification, it's not in there in the plan because it gives us more. gives us more flexibility without a plan change to change the amount we spend on that. So if something catastrophic happened, we wouldn't have to go through a plan amendment to change that. We just have to change it in our budget process. So that's the reason for the flexibility there. To Keith's point, I think we might be misinterpreting their intent here, strictly using bed nights or room nights as a barometer. Says twice, increased tourism-related business. I'm on this board, my fifth term, as a tourist-related business. I don't, I don't take people in overnight, but I am involved in tourism. A lot of people that do come visit here, come to my establishment. So I think their intent is not necessarily 100% associated with an increase in room nights, but the betterment of the experience for visitors that come here. That's my non-lawyer interpretation.
There are many of those.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You said exactly what I was going to say. Phil, I, I mean, when you read it and it says increased tourist-related business activities, I don't just equate that to room nights. I mean, we have a lot of tourist-related activities. A boat is one of them. Now, locals use it, but a lot of tourists use it. I mean, and Clearwater Marine Aquarium, I mean, there's so many different things that we have that we see as tourist-type businesses. I just don't think it equates to just room nights, so I think we have to have a clearer understanding of what does that really mean and what was their intent, and I don't, how do we get that?
Either a court challenge that would clarify it, an attorney general's opinion, legislative search as far as minutes or committee meeting notes to see. My recollection of when I looked for those, it didn't really seem to give a lot of direction as to what the intent specifically was as to that piece. We can certainly do a little bit more digging to see, but sometimes it's not until either you get a court challenge or someone specifically asks for an interpretation as to what that means.
Asking for the interpretation, we go through the AG?
The BCC would have to give that direction, but yes, typically you'd ask the Attorney General's office.
I mean, can't we just reach out to the bill sponsors and ask them what they thought as a, as a start?
I don't have an answer for that. I don't know if that's anything that we've previously done.
It's an idea. I mean, I don't think we want to go to court, you know, but I mean, I do think we need to get clarification on that, because the way I'm reading it, it's, unfortunately, it doesn't say improve, it says increase, which complicates it, but I do think, I agree with Phil. The other question is, is you didn't include on your PowerPoint the estuary and lagoon improvements, the, the description of that. Can you tell us about, I mean, I'm not sure how estuary and lagoon improvements relate to tourism, so I'm just curious as to what it says.
There is no description, that's why it's not included. It was a channel or bodies of water that they believe, I'm assuming the legislature's thought process is that one of the draws for tourists are our water bodies, and improving the quality of those various types of, you know, channels, estuaries, river shorelines and all that, just like the beaches themselves speak for themselves, and that's why they authorized the use of it. But there's not anything specifically defining what that means or limiting it.
So estuary and lagoon improvements would not include, like, improvements to Indian Rocks Beach or Clearwater Beach or the shoreline of Honeyman Island, right? Because that's, that's...
I think that would probably, if I'm understanding the question correctly, fall into just beach nourishment or shoreline, beach shoreline nourishment, not necessarily, you know, I'd have to, I probably would defer to someone who can define an estuary or try to find a definition for estuary to see whether or not a specific project meets the definition of any one of those categories.
My take is that the estuary and lagoon improvements is something to do with maybe water quality, given the fact that during this time we had a lot of overflow from sewers and stuff like that, so that's what my guess is, but I'd like to see some more clarification as to what that is.
So would I.
Thank you.
Janet.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of comments to address a few of the comments that have already been made. There have been several of us who are very involved in transportation and in trying to figure out how we make up for the fact that we're 40, 50 years behind the times in terms of our public transportation options, and have talked to the local members of our delegation with regard to the way this statute was opened up, and the response that I have gotten personally is, the statute is perfectly clear. Are you listening, Michael? I'm just saying. And they don't think there needs to be any further clarification. So to me, that says, you know, a little bit of common sense is necessary here, and given how quickly technology is changing the way in which we look at public transportation options and how anxious some of our legislative folks are to encourage us to think about those newer types of transportation options, they are very interested, they being the legislature, in hearing about projects that are specifically related to new technologies and the ability to move our visitors from, Commissioner Gerard hit it right on the head, Tampa International out to Clearwater Beach, for example, and out to our beaches on the barrier islands. And so, that said, a project specific to the newer types of technology and that meet the threshold of having a synergy to our tourists arriving and going and moving around while they're here, because while we can spend all the marketing dollars in the world to bring people here, if they don't have a good experience because they're stuck for half of their vacation in gridlocked traffic, they won't come back. So I think it does beg for a very thoughtful, deliberate conversation about embracing some of these newer technologies and the way in which we can use them effectively, efficiently, and, and at the same time with an eye on the cost to taking us into the future of whatever we are about to be. And as to the waterways, the lagoons and the estuaries, they are filters for our oceans and for the Gulf, and for that fact alone, and without keeping them healthy, look at the mess that the red tide caused and the algae blooms and all of that last year. So that's all I had to say on that for now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Charlie Justice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I forgot, it was about seven or eight levels ago that I put my hand up. There was just some random thoughts and a question. One, there was a study done years ago by the estuary program that, I think it's $22 billion of our GDP and 300,000-plus jobs rely on a healthy Tampa Bay and a healthy estuary, so I assume that's what the legislature was going for. We talked last year about going to the legislature and asking for clarification because we had all these same questions a year ago, but we kind of balked at that because we were concerned that if we went to them and the statute got opened up again, who knows what would happen? So when it first, statute was first changed, I was much harsher on it as far as, I didn't think we could spend any of these dollars because we, to Keith's point, we would never get an economic study that shows that if you did that culvert or did that sewer line, that that was going to increase tourism, but more thinking about it with people visiting and tourist nights more than tourism activity. So that, I think that clarification is critically important, and however we get it. And also about the transportation, about whether we just added regular buses on the road, is that going to drive tourism versus if we had a cool tourist-specific bus or monorail or something like that went from the airport to the beach, something like that, then you could make the argument of like the New Orleans streetcars, that actually some people go for that purpose. Anyway, my question at the end was, though, about the economic impact. If we have, if the TDC says this is a project we want to embrace, and they secure a group to go out and do an economic study, and they come back and they say, sort of, does the TDC or does the BCC have the ability to make a legislative determination that there is economic benefit, there is, that would meet those things, or is it, well, the economic expert said yes or no, and that's it?
The statute is currently written, and I highlighted the fact it's a little unusual, it's, requires a TDC recommendation to move forward. So regardless of the economic impact study, they could recommend against it, and then typically the, the BCC would have to, at that point, we'd have to address whether or not they could legislatively find otherwise. Typically, the, the role of the TDC is to be advisory, and obviously, while that's an important role, it's ultimately the BCC's decision. This piece of it is a little unusual because it seems to indicate that you can't move forward without it. And like I said, it's a brand-new statute, so it would really, we'd have to really evaluate it at that time to see whether or not the BCC could, despite the TDC's recommendation in this particular instance, disregard that, for example.
I guess the question is, I could find you two different economic experts to tell me yes or no on a particular project. Who, who would, you know, be the referee in that decision, or would be the one that we hired? You know, I guess that's where I'm trying to figure out.
Well, and the way it works, the interesting thing about the statute, the way it was written, is the TDC is not a legal entity, so the TDC cannot enter into a contract, so the, and the TDC has no money. So how the TDC is supposed to have this economic impact study is anyone's guess. My best advice would be that the TDC would go to the BCC and say, hey, we'd like an economic impact study done for these purposes, we'd like you to enter into the contract and to fund it on our behalf. Then it would ultimately be the county's economic impact study. It's not the TDC's economic impact study, but it would be the first step in trying to evaluate the merits of the project. Statutory eligibility would obviously be addressed during that process, like parallel tracks, and if it's something that we just opine legally that you can't fund, we would say, hey, it seems like, why throw good money after bad on a study because it doesn't seem like it would qualify? So that would certainly all be part of it. But right now, as, as it's written, it would be the county's economic impact study. The TDC would receive a copy of it, obviously review it, give their insight input. The BCC would get a copy of it, you could have a discussion, but it would have to basically meet the, showing the positive impacts of tourism business activities.
Okay, I didn't see any other hands. Charlie Gertis? Okay, anyone else? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What would your, and I know this is off the top of your head, and, but maybe you've thought about it. What if we, what if we approved or added to our plan both of these? I'll say it out loud, because I don't have to run for election anymore, but I totally agree with Commissioner Long's statement about the interest in Tallahassee for new and innovative, out-of-the-box transportation solutions. What's inconsistent is their desire to pay for it. And so I'm wondering if we included this in our plan, could we condition the use of these funds as, for instance, matching only? There has to be some other funding participant as opposed to a sole source of revenue for a given project?
I, I think you could, and one of the bullet points on the presentation talks about, in any event, you can't fund 100% of any one of these projects from TD dollars, so there has to be another funding source for a part of it, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, Julie.
Listening to a couple of the comments, I thought it was interesting where it says, you know, in the beginning, it talks about increasing tourist-related business activities, but at the bottom of the presentation, it says, "An independent professional analysis is performed at the expense of the county TDC, and it demonstrates the positive impact of the infrastructure project on tourist-related business." Positive impact and increase are two different things. So I think there's wiggle room on the economic study because a positive impact doesn't necessarily mean increase, in my mind. And I know it's semantics, but I think there's, there's leeway. And, and, and just, just for the record, I'm open to having these two things added to our plan, I think, as the attorney stated. Doesn't, doesn't mean you have to use it, but you can avail yourself of things in the future. Thank you.
Phil?
Adding to what I said before, one last thing. Day trippers are considered visitors to the county, and they don't stay in accommodation, so, and if we, if we improve the ability for day trippers to come here, then that would be enhancing tourism-related business.
Okay, anyone else at this point? Oh, I'm sorry, George Carter.
Sorry. I'm going to jump in here only because we're really not talking about a lot of money. We're talking about $60 million. Forty percent of that is available for capital projects, which comes out to roughly $24 million. And then you can only spend up to 70% of that on these capital projects, and these capital projects aren't just $100,000 capital projects. And I'm afraid that all this discussion that we're having is being heard in the community that here we have a fresh pot of money that we can use to solve all our problems, and they're not even going to put a dent into it. And yet, we're even talking about expanding the possible uses. So I think we need to be very careful going forward.
Ken.
Well, thank you. I actually wasn't going to say anything, I was just suggesting we do that like they do in fact, but since Mayor Kretko said that, I mean, I have the exact same thing written Out of that $24 million, we're doing beach re-nourishment, spring training, museums, the aquarium, performing arts centers. Creative Pinellas, I'm assuming, comes out of this 40%? Does not, it's out of the 60? Okay. And then you've got potential uses down the line, including a Ray Stadium in Pinellas, along with transportation and infrastructure. So I'm supportive of talking about including those, but like you said, it's, it's really a small piece of what we can do, and it's got to be, you know, project-based. You know, if there's a, a unique project, Commissioner Long, that meets that criteria, I'd be supportive of it, but this is not going to solve all of our problems. I think there's another source for transportation that we need to talk about, and that's the 1% or the half percent county-wide that's ultimately going to be the fix for what we need.
Madam Chair. I'm going to recognize everybody, then I want to turn.
Yeah.
Janet, and then Tony.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief. I just wanted to respond to both Mayor Kretko's and Commissioner Welch's comments, because I have not heard anyone who thinks that the bed tax is the ultimate solution for any of the big projects that we are so challenged with. However, that said, to me, it is almost irresponsible that our millions and millions of tourists who come here every year don't pay any portion of our infrastructure. And it doesn't matter if it's transportation or sewers or whatever, I do think that there's an opportunity to dedicate a little bit of those dollars towards these types of things that we're so constrained to pay for. And while it may be a little bit, when you match it with a lot of other sources, it can grow pretty quickly.
I have to just correct for the record. Their tourists do pay a penny for Pinellas, which has used about, generally over the last three decades, about 50% and sometimes higher was used for our transportation infrastructure. We also do receive a portion of the sales tax, which we use for general government purposes, which might include maintaining roads. So I do need to correct that for the record, Commissioner. I stand corrected. [inaudible]. Phil was next, then Tony? No? Did I miss? Okay, Tony, sorry.
To my colleague Phil, I, the, as far as influence goes, there's no doubt about overnight visitors or visitors to our area influencing, but this entire pot of money, this entire $60 million is driven by room night. But this entire pot of money, this entire $60 million, is driven by room nights. And it's driven by room nights because then a bed tax is collected. So I think you need to sort of put this into perspective, that yes, there are a lot of other influences. But at the end of the day, without room nights, you do not have a bed tax.
Anyone else, or is it my turn now? Okay, thank you. Well, I had Jim Abernathy, thank you, Jim, for bringing us today, give you the capital funding program. And what I really want you all to pay attention to, and Commissioner Welch already mentioned it, you know, we may have other potential capital projects with the Rays, and, you know, Philly's is under consideration. But you do have a pretty generous ending fund balance if some of those projects do or don't happen. I also believe it's a slippery slope. I would somewhat support transportation's, innovative transportation projects. But I think once you open it, then you're going to have sewer projects, you're going to have drainage projects, you're going to have everybody knocking at the door, asking for the money, and saying, well, you did it for here. My need is tourist-related project. And I think Tony made a really good point. If we start eroding, having any decrease in bed tax because of a recession, or red tide, or any other catastrophic event, you know, we could be in a little bit of trouble. So we have other alternatives, such as the gas tax. We have five cents that we can implement. We have, as Ken mentioned, the one-cent transit surtax that we could go to referendum, just like Hillsborough just did. And wasn't that interesting? The court ruling. But my bottom line is, I do not want to touch the 60% allocation that is set aside for marketing. That is critical to our future for tourism. You know, if we want to talk about the 40% and have other projects compete for capital, maybe it's worth talking about it. But I do not want to touch the 60%. Pat?
How specific can we be if we decided to amend our plan to include these other things? Can we say, we just want to amend it to maybe do a transportation project sometime? Or do we have to include all of that stuff?
You could elect to amend the plan to only include parts of it. It still would otherwise be statutorily eligible. It's just not in your plan. That wouldn't prevent someone from asking. That would obviously require a plan amendment, which is within your control. So I don't know what we really accomplished, but you could. The board could give direction that, okay, we want to amend this, but we only want for these specific uses added to the plan for now.
Yeah, I mean, people ask all the time.
Sure.
And we don't have to do this right now. We could do it three years from now if we decided we had a chunk of money we wanted to spend on some way to get people back and forth to PIE, by the way. Anyway.
That's correct.
And I think that's a good point, Pat. You know, it could be amended later if the need is seen, and that there is something that is a critical transportation project. We don't have to, like, put it in now. And, excuse me, before I recognize, Barry, Ken?
Just a real quick follow-up to that. Typically, how long does it take for an amendment? Couple of months, three months?
The amendment, probably a month.
From start to finish?
Start to finish. You would have to get agendized, put on the agenda, go through review.
Seriously.
I'm sorry?
We want that writing.
Okay, let's be conservative. Probably three months.
I was just going to say, I'm not in control of it. My piece of it is pretty quick. It's just a matter of the direction. There's a process. That's not just the lawyers.
Correct. A question for you, because I was trying to remember. Doesn't the tourist development plan have to come to the tourist development council first? Or does it?
They, yes, they certainly would look at it and make recommendations, obviously. But it's ultimately the BCC's plan. They do get the opportunity to review it. And as set forth currently in your new plan, they are tasked with, every five years or so, looking at it and making recommendations anyway. So that would be next November, roughly.
Right, okay.
But you could do it earlier if the board wanted to do that, too.
Okay, thank you. Barry?
I just wanted to highlight, so the reason we had this discussion here today is because it was talking about our overall transportation system as we're going forward. Next month, we're going to be having a conversation about transportation, and how it links and what direction the Board of Commissioners wanted to go. So we wanted to at least put this on the table, have this discussion of whether or not it's even a possibility to look at this, or any specific project that may or may not come up. There's nothing on the table currently. Whit's up next, and he's going to talk a little bit about transportation. But we're really trying to frame it and have this discussion to understand people's thoughts ahead of when we're having a bigger conversation about our overall transportation system. And if we could, I'd like to get Whit.
Whit Blanton with Forward Pinellas.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Let's see, there we go. I'm going to reprise a presentation that I made exactly a year ago today to the tourist development council. With, it's a little more brief and not as specific as it was a year ago on options for very specific types of transit services that could be considered potentially eligible. And I phrased it exactly that way on purpose, could be considered potentially eligible. So I want to talk about the linkage between tourism, transportation, and land use, and frame this a little bit. Michael's done a great job giving you a broad overview of the law. And I think I just want to underscore the point that was made on this side of the room that, whether it's 70 or 80%, I don't remember exactly, transportation always takes partnerships. And so you're never going to be able to fund one project purely with one source. It always is going to be a combination. But one real advantage of this is that it has the potential of leveraging other funding sources. So even if it's a small amount of money, you can use that as your local match to bring in state dollars from the Florida Department of Transportation, or from some other entity. So just please keep that in mind. Any type of transit investment, whether it's capital or operating, almost always requires a local match, if you're going to bring federal or state dollars. So what is that local match? And that local match can be as small as 20%. It can be as high as 50% of what the project amount is. So what does this really mean for Pinellas County? Better infrastructure to support increasing tourism demands on facilities and services. And that's a pretty broad statement, but it's getting workers to jobs. It's having an attractive workplace destination so that people choose that destination as an employment opportunity over other potential employment opportunities, because they have good transportation access. Maybe instead of an hour and 45 minutes on a bus, it's 45 minutes on a bus. And that's a real difference to people who have options. And so there's some direct research that shows that people who have transportation options can earn higher wages for their household, because they are able to choose what transportation options to pursue. We are a growing county. Maybe not as fast-growing as Pasco, or Hillsborough, or Manatee County, but we still are expected to add another 100,000 people by the year 2045. This is just some data. I did not update this from the presentation I made a year ago, so I think this has only increased in the last year. But we had more than a 6% increase in hotel rooms sold, 2017 over 2016. 6.3 million visitors in 2016, and that was an increase of more than 2% over 2015. Again, I think these numbers have only gone up. 57% of 2016 visitors used a rental car on their trip. So that's a significant expense for a rental car that if they weren't paying for a rental car, they might spend for an extra night in the hotel room, for instance. The March and February 2018 visitor survey results, we mined those pretty carefully. The top three attractions or services that would enhance the destination experience outside of doing nothing, cheaper and more parking, these were responses from visitors, less congestion and traffic, and more public transportation options available are what people said would enhance their experience. More than 6% used public transportation during their stay. That's significantly higher than our day-to-day workers here in Pinellas County, where it's about 1.5% to 1.8%. And visitors spend $33 per day on transportation-related expenses currently. And I really think that's a pretty low estimate, but that's what we got from the survey. That's about the price of a rental car per day, maybe, a cheap one. And if we look at connecting workers to jobs, this is just a map that shows the percentage of zip codes for tourism-related workers, of where they're coming from. A lot of those workers come from outside the traditional tourist destination areas. In fact, we just looked at some data for St. Pete Beach, and 80% of the workers in St. Pete Beach come from somewhere else, not St. Pete Beach. And half of those come from St. Petersburg. Tourism accounts for about 7.2% of Pinellas County's jobs. So that's a significant contribution. But really, it's the $10 billion to the regional economy. And again, that's a low estimate. I've seen that number as high as $15 billion. The average Pinellas household spends 60% of their income on housing and transportation costs. So that's everybody. That's not just tourism workers. But what's considered affordable is 45%. So we have a real rent-burdened and housing-burdened economy. And so anything you can do to lower the cost for housing by maybe making transportation more affordable is something that would help the quality of life and the prosperity of our workforce. Transit already supports tourism in a pretty big way in Pinellas County. Just a few, Sun Coast Beach Trolley that operates up and down Gulf Boulevard, the Jolly Trolley Service that operates on North Alt. 19 and in other parts of the county. A lot of our hotel owners, many here in the room, have a universal pass for their employees. And then there are a lot of beach events that PSTA provides contract service or free service to. And then just broadly, and I'll finish on this topic, is there's a lot of benefits to Pinellas County for improved transit service. Think of your chain is only as strong as the weakest link. Well, transit service right now is the weakest link in our transportation network. It does, and there's research showing throughout the U.S. where you have good transportation accessibility, you have increased wages on average per worker. It is a congestion alternative. I never claim that transit reduces congestion, but it gives people a travel option, and that's an important consideration as well. It reduces demand for parking at destinations. We just had a conversation last night in Indian Rocks Beach where they have a parking problem because their workers are parking right where the restaurant is and right where the hotel is, and the visitors are hunting for parking. So if you could provide an option for some of those workers, then that frees up parking for visitors. There's a health advantage to people who take transit on a daily basis, because they incorporate walking into their travel. And then it increases foot traffic and development value. And this is just a map of Pinellas County where we have opportunities to use transit as a leverage for not only redevelopment, but economic productivity. So I'll leave it at that, very broad. We do have a number of projects in the pipeline where there's a direct correlation, in my view, for tourism and transportation. An example would be the busway that's under design on the Moro Causeway Bridge. That's a capital project. The Central Avenue Bus Rapid Transit Project. So we're thinking about tourism all the time when we plan for transportation. We need to think of a lot of things, but that is certainly foremost in our minds. So I'll open it up to any questions you may have of me. And thank you for the opportunity to be here today.
Any questions for Whit? Ken?
What was the bus?
Turn your microphone on, please.
What was the bus causeway you mentioned?
So there was a legislative earmark a few years ago from Senator Latvala for a design of a dedicated busway on the Memorial Causeway Bridge. The Florida Department of Transportation has been designing that project. It is, it's going to wrap up at about a 60% design, because we're still working on building consensus on what that project's value is. But that will actually be a design of 60%. And the next phase would be to look at a larger, what's called a PD&E study, for a bigger segment, because the legislative earmark was really just for the center median of that bridge, and didn't really deal with the bottlenecks on either end. But that's a legitimate project that would increase travel time to and from downtown in the beach.
I don't really have a question. I just had a comment, you know, I've just been listening, and listening to what you were saying, Whit, and some others. I think having multiple funding sources available at the moment for transportation is probably pretty important, because we don't exactly know where we're going to end up. We know we have options like the one-cent sales tax. We know we have options with the gas tax. But we don't exactly know which is going to pass and what's not going to pass. And so having multiple available funding sources is probably beneficial today. So in my mind, I think we should go ahead and add it to the plan, but put a caveat in it that it would, you know, be for transportation that enhances tourism, or whatever, that we're not going to get into all of the other stuff. And it doesn't mean we have to use it right now, but it's just an available piece to maybe help springboard a project in the future if it comes up. Because when we, if and when we do want to use it, if everybody is agreeable to it, I don't want us to be fumbling to try to get the plan done. It's kind of like, just go ahead and put it there so we know it's available if we need it. And maybe it's used as a last resort. I don't know. But it just seems to me, go ahead and put it in the plan so that it's available. And I just also wanted to share that, and I've said it in a couple of boards, some of you might have already heard me say this, but we did a citizen survey in the city of Dunedin, and there was three top issues, all interrelated. But one of the strongest issues was traffic. And so I went back and looked, you know, we've got three state roads that go through our city, so we get a lot of cross-through traffic. It's not just necessarily Dunedin. And I know traffic is a big deal in Pinellas County in a whole. But I went back and looked, because one of the other concerns was over development. So I said, okay, well, how many residents have we added in the last 10 years? You know we're built out. 1,700, which is less than 5% over the last 10 years. It's not a lot of people. That's not households, that's people. But if you look at the increase of bed tax funding that we've gotten, I can only go, I used our wonderful online tool to look at the last five years, just in the month of March. I know we did the 6%, so that affects it, but 77% increase in funding, just in the month of March over the last five years. It's huge. What does that tell you? That our traffic is being driven, to some great degree, by the increase of tourism that we have here, and we don't have an infrastructure to support it. And it's driving our residents crazy. It really is. I mean, I hear about it all the time, so much more than I did in previous years. So to me, that tells me that this could be a possible funding source. It is not the answer, end-all, to be-all. It might be one signature project-type thing, you know. But again, we don't even have to decide whether we do it or don't do it. Just put it in the plan so it's available. So I just wanted to share those thoughts. Thank you.
Well, specifically, at this point, anybody have any questions for Whit? And then, because we'll get into comments. I just, I'm actually kind of surprised at the connecting workers to jobs slide. There's a lot more workers that live within the beach worker area than I would have thought. You know, you look at the shaded areas, I mean, it's kind of amazing. Just as a comment. Okay, thank you, Whit.
Sure.
Cookie, did you have something for Whit?
Yes, Whit. The one piece that you didn't mention, which of course is probably one of the biggest pieces, is the safety issue, and getting people off the streets, you know, in, you know, buses, or whatever mode of transportation. Not only does it help the congestion problem, but we have severe issues with safety on most of our US-19 and all of the bigger roads, and people coming into town who don't know our roads. I mean, we talked about at the crosswalks and things like that, just at our local level, where they don't even know to push the button, or don't, or whatever the reason is. So, I mean, I think there's that piece to add to it, always, the safety issue that we have. Sure.
Phil?
Last year, when you presented, you talked about the major arteries, and going out to the beaches and so forth. And my comment to you was, well, I think you're doing it backwards, because once you dump all those people there, they've got to find their way to their final destination in a controlled manner. So I said you should work the other way, and figure out the capillaries first, because it's not going to work. The arteries aren't going to work if you can't get them all the way to where they're going. Has there been any more work with regard to that?
I wouldn't say specifically. The legislature did enable some new technologies to be available. In fact, the governor just signed that law yesterday. So, you know, from a micro-mobility standpoint, that's part of the solution. Number of communities are looking at small electric vehicles to navigate around at that local level. I think you have to look at both, and I think that was my answer last year. Until you have a connection that you're working on... Until you have a connection that you're working on, it, to me, seems like you need to kind of wait on the micro part. They go together. And I would say if we've got a commitment, for instance, if the Central Avenue Bus Rapid Transit Project were to go forward, we would work like, you know, in a very focused way to wherever that endpoint is, let's say it's at the county park down there in St. Pete Beach. How do you then connect everybody really well? I mean, but until you know that that connection is going to be made, I'm not sure how effective it is just to focus on getting people from a county park without a connection.
I guess, I agree with you. It's all-inclusive, and I just wanted to put that out there again because I don't want to have a build it and they will, and we'll figure it out later. And it doesn't work, and now we've wasted all that without really thinking it all the way through as an entire project.
I'll take a bigger analogy, and that's when we've been talking about high-speed rail. And, you know, years ago, there was a high-speed rail project that was going to come along from Orlando to Tampa, and a lot of the criticism was whether they're going to drop them in the middle of Tampa, and then what are they going to do? And I got to believe that if you're going to spend millions and millions of dollars to build a high-speed rail line, we would work really hard to figure out what we do. So, you know, it's, what comes first is sort of my question, chicken or egg answer? But thank you for that. That's a very good point.
Well, I've got the floor. I want to clarify, I've made a few comments today. It sounds like I want to go build a parking garage or something like that. I'm 100% behind what Chairman Seal said was, we've got to protect that 60%, make sure it's always for tourism marketing and promotion. That's the number one thing we're here for. I'm just trying to put my neutral perspective out there on how to interpret different things should they come along. So I'm 100% behind heads and beds. Believe me.
This would have to be, of course, as I mentioned, a county commission decision. So since we're together today, thank you, Phil, for making your comments. I would like to hear from the other TDC members what your thoughts are. I did want to also point out that both Commissioner Long and I serve on TIBARDA, and the study is underway for Bus Rapid Transit, but it's two years away from the initial study being done. It just started. The other part, and Commissioner Long was very instrumental in getting this, is the $1 million in studying innovative technologies. So, again, I, if we wanted to consider looking at the 40% capital category, perhaps, but I respectfully disagree with Mayor Bajalski because I think if you open it up now, people will line up for the money, and I think what Whit said was, is very wise, and Phil as well. If there's a specific project that comes to light that has good nexus with the tourism industry, maybe we consider it at that point. But I hate to open it up because I think it becomes a very quick slippery slope of people lining up to fund their projects. So I will start with Charlie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I should know this, I'm sorry, Michael. When we do applications for elite events and capital funding, is there an application fee?
No, there's no application fee.
I was wondering if we were to amend the plan, or even if we weren't, and someone wanted to apply for this kind of funding, and we have to fund a study, could the TDC or the Board of County Commissioners recover the expenditure by having an application fee?
I don't think that would probably be the way to do it. You might deduct those costs if there was ultimately an award, for example.
Yeah, I wasn't looking on making money, but not losing money.
At least recoup them that way, possibly.
Okay. I'll just share my thoughts real quickly, and I am a, I'm a big supporter of transportation improvements and trying to be a contributor. I'm not the idea person, but I want to be a contributor to solving that issue, not just in the city of St. Petersburg, but in Pinellas County and maybe even through Pasco and Hillsborough, whatever I can do. So I'm totally on board with that. On the other side of the tension is my, you know, what maybe some would call parochial view, that I would like to resolve the Raze situation, and I want to know what's going to happen with the stadium. And before, I've always felt like Pinellas County's biggest advantage was our financing structure, and I still believe that's a very strong advantage. And I want to make sure that we don't lose that advantage because the disadvantage is the track record and the geography, right? The 30-minute drive time that seems to be such a big thing. But our financing structure kind of equalizes those negatives out, and so I don't want to do anything that endangers our financial strength in terms of keeping the Raze in Pinellas County and not even St. Petersburg, Pinellas County. So I'm in favor of, I'm in favor of using funds that would leverage state, federal, or other funders, and I would like to do it on a case-by-case basis instead of adding it to the plan. That's where I'm at. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Keep?
I'm not sure I fully understand how that would work. Maybe Michael can answer the question. If a project came forward and you didn't already adopt it as part of the plan, don't you have to amend the plan? Then would you unamend the plan again to, you know? I mean, how do you do that over and over again?
You would, exactly. You would have to amend the plan to include it, and then if subsequent projects came up that you, for whatever reason, didn't as a group support, then you could just say no. But yes, you would have to amend the plan first.
Well, having said that, and knowing that the cat is out of the bag now, and I've been a person who's always been against expanding the use of the tax, but I don't see any harm in adopting it, so I would say let's go ahead and do that now and take those case-by-case basis.
Open it up to all the potential uses or just the transportation?
No, I would open it up to all of the uses. I would just make sure that you did not attack the 60%.
George?
I've got to disagree with my colleague to the left. There's no way I could support amending the plan to include everybody. I may be able to be convinced to go to transportation, but I think that there are other options that are much more realistic, provide much more money, that we're refusing to consider, and we need to get those opened first, have those discussions, and then this amount, which again, 70% of $24 million isn't going to do maybe two miles of roadway, you know? It's just, it just seems impractical to think that it's going to solve all our problems today.
Some comments. I agree, as usual, with the chair, that we're here to protect our industry at 60%. I think that's a good and realistic number, and we need to make sure that we're protecting that. This week, I was at Southern Innkeepers Association up in Raleigh, and we had speakers and all there, and I can tell you, from Disney, from other major destinations, affordable housing was the number-one area that was the concern of our industry. They said that, also that we're going to be short 1 million culinary workers in the next five years, and affordable housing is one of the major things. So I think we need to look at transportation, but I think we have other projects that we need to look at, and we asked the BCC to add some other items to it that need to be taken into consideration for employees in that area. Disney, and I won't say the number, she came out with a number of housing, they call it beds, that they're coming up with and building 40 miles away or something like that. It blew us away at the amount of what they're looking at over there. So I think there's more than just transportation. I agree with the mayor in that we really need to look at also who are the other partners in this? It's not a big amount in the balance, but it's also where are the other partners? And I believe that we pay our share of the 1% tax that we've all endorsed three times now. We pay big property taxes, and that's gone up in the last so many years. We call it the sales tax that you get a piece of and the cities get a piece of. So I think we do pay our share on it, but I think that we need to look forward to these problems and add to them. Transportation's one of those that we need to add to and address it the best way we can as the residents and for the industry in Pinellas County. Visit Florida is a good example. They've been cut from $94 million down to $50 million by, the governor saved us and all, and signed the bill at 50. That's a big cut, 44 employees, I believe it is. A lot of talent. I think that the STAR report that they showed for last year showed that September was the worst month, and it was the hurricane and the threat of hurricanes. I think that our reserves today were a lot better shape than we were five years ago. I can tell you that. We all know that, that's been chairs. So I think that that's a piece that we ought to have a little more comfort and be conservative on what we're doing with also. I think that last year when we talked about transportation, I thought there were some examples in South Florida that we're going ahead and putting airport transportation in place. I don't know if it's done or not, but I'd sure like to see what other places are doing with transportation, that it may help us as an industry with certain projects that we can relate to from our competitors that we compete against on it. And so I just kind of like to conclude that a number that keeps hitting in my head this week, Keith is sitting over there, and I want to, I tell him, he's going to have the same thought. The growth of groups in this country for hotel business has grown less than 1% in 10 years. We're competing harder and harder to get the groups into our hotels, and that's major employment. So we need to protect the 60%. It's competitive out there, and we really need to look at it. So those are my thoughts on it. I think we need to add more than just transportation.
Thank you for your comments. I do want to mention that in this next penny in 2020, the county commission has endorsed using a good deal of money for affordable housing. We've set up a steering committee with the cities to be able to identify some affordable housing projects. So it is top of the mind for the county commission in trying to move in that direction. So I agree with you. That is something that we need to work on. And then you mentioned the culinary gap, and the RFP, the Request for Proposal, just went out for a consultant to be looking at the Florida Gulf Coast Art Museum, Botanical Gardens, and Heritage Village as far as if need-based and other issues associated with that. So we'll look forward to getting a response. Julie, I know you made a comment. Do you have anything more to add? Doreen?
Thank you. Comments made, particularly by our chair and some of our colleagues, you've so eloquently stated really my position. I came back on the board taking a conservative approach, and I strongly recommend that we maintain that 60%. It's crucial to what we do, and the changes, the things that could affect that, looking into our future, they've already been mentioned in terms of economic downturn, you know, natural disasters, all of those kinds of things. Transportation, affordable housing, all these things are so extremely important, but I take that conservative approach, is that you open the door by putting those plans back on, you know, making our plan revised to the legislative recommendations or the statute changes. And I think we allow those projects to come to us and do that from a case-to-case basis. And yes, if it needs revision of the plan at that time, we move it forward based on the strength of that particular project. So thanks to everyone's input and professional guidance. Thank you.
Tony?
Yeah, I don't have any opinions on this.
I didn't think you'd have an opinion.
The, what always concerns me is the ever-increasing usage of the bed tax, which originally was started for marketing a destination. It just cannot, at the end of the day, be all things to everyone. I'm deeply concerned about when I read what is available if we went with these changes. It really opens up a can of worms. So I couldn't support all of it. I think transportation is critical. I don't see specific projects that this would be earmarked for, and that always concerns me. And I'll just use an example because the airports come up a couple of times now. You know, five years ago, you took a cab or a super shuttle. Now there are entire areas set aside for ride shares. That didn't exist five years ago. I mean, Uber has changed the landscape, and it's changed it dramatically. So as the commissioner said about new technologies, I don't think it's a bus anymore. I don't know what it is, but I don't think it's a bus anymore. So I would be open to consideration of transportation, but I would like to see a specific plan. My biggest concern is, and I said this a couple of years ago, if you want to spend money on transportation, that's what the 40% was for. If you start to carve out 20%, you're giving VSPC an $11.8 million haircut based upon the bed tax collections of last year. So you would have to reduce by 12 million. Visit Florida's been brought up. It's been reduced by 26 million. There has actually been conversations about eliminating it entirely. There are DMOs out there that are talking about coming up with additional money for, to fill the gap that Visit Florida will no longer do, whether it's a sales mission or co-op advertising. We have to be protective of the money we have. The 60% does that. If you talk to other DMOs around the state, they are envious that we put this in place, that we have locked this in. We can do projects, we can do capital projects, but it has to stay within the 40%. So I certainly would be open to any project that increases tourism, provided it increases bed tax. But again, I think we need to protect the 60%. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Chuck, last but not least.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to thank Commissioner Long for your leadership on transportation. It is important. We are behind the times on transportation. I don't take that away from you, and somebody had to take this on, and so thank you. Saying that, I have said this before, but as an owner-operator of a hospitality in downtown St. Petersburg, I rely on getting guests to my hotel. Visit Florida gets people to this state. We see at night on the television, there's always people, they're advertising to get you to go to Missouri or California or Utah or Colorado, but we are constantly trying to get people to make that decision to come to Florida. Once they've come to Florida, our great team at Visit St. Pete Clearwater, thank you very much, they do an excellent job of making that decision to come to Pinellas County. Our mass, vast majority of folks come from Orlando, so they're brought to the Disney area, and they've got a 50/50 shot of going to one coast or the other. And so Visit St. Pete Clearwater convinces them to come to Pinellas County, and they do a great job with that. Now we funded elite events, so that's another reason for people to come here. We've funded museums, Sporting Complex, another reason to get visitors here. That still doesn't get them to my hotel, so I have to contribute, you know, over $100,000 a year in marketing to get folks, now that they're in Pinellas County, to get them to my project. Once they're there, they're going to spend money on bed tax, yes, but they're also going to eat at my restaurant, and they're going to pay 6% sales tax on that meal. They're going to go upstairs, they're going to have a drink at the rooftop bar, and they're going to pay 6% on those drinks. They're going to walk around downtown and get the ice cream cone and pay 6% on that ice cream cone. We all go on vacation, and when we get back, we look at our credit card and we go, how did we spend that much money? But we did, and there's 6% in almost every one of those transactions, and those go to Pinellas County. So I'm hopeful that the Board of County Commissioners decides not to erode that 60% because it's vital to this tourist destination in Pinellas County. And I'd hate to see them start going over to Cocoa Beach or down to Miami because we didn't. didn't tug on them to stay here. So I am very hopeful that you continue the quest with transportation, but hopefully we'll see that we don't kill the goat and goose by eroding that 60%. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Russ, I did want to mention, Barry already did, but I want to emphasize July 18th at 9:30 a.m., we are having a work session on transportation and housing. With Barry's arrival here in Pinellas County, while we looked at affordable housing and other things, he has asked Forward Pinellas, as well as our staff, to look at workforce development, affordable housing, and transportation to put together a better plan for that. So I think we'll see a lot of good information, and right now it's scheduled for the Clerk's Conference Room in the courthouse, but we may need to move it.
We'll have an update, but yeah.
Okay, but we'll let you know about that meeting because if you are interested in that whole Nexus Plan, you may want to attend so that you can see that. I also wanted to ask Chairman of the PSTA, which is Janet Long, I believe that you all started bus service to the airports? And how is it going?
It's going very well, and we're very pleased with it. And we are continuing to work. I know Brad Miller, as well as Whit, have been meeting with Barry, so we have that component added into the conversation on the 18th. Madam Chair, if I may, could I just make one last comment? I just want to thank everyone from my heart for being so open and willing to have this conversation today. I know it's not an easy conversation to have because it's, you know, messing with what is, and that's always a frightening thing for anybody. But that said, I want to assure you, it has never, ever been my intent to do anything with the 60%, ever. So please, let me say that again. I have never said that I wanted to take any dollars from the 60%. So, thank you very much.
Commissioner Long, I'm happy to hear that because I remember one meeting where you said, "Let's look at 40 and 20." And that's what opened up this whole conversation.
But didn't it get your attention, though?
Oh, yes, it did.
Well, that was the point.
Julie? I never talked about the 60% because it wasn't anything I would ever try to touch, so I wanted to make sure that that was clear. But I also, as the county commissioners deliberate on this, you know, change the plan, don't change the plan, an option for, I mean, I think everybody has said they're supportive of a possible use with a particular transportation-type project that makes an impact. I think we do at least have a consensus on that, if it comes up. Something you might want to consider, instead of the back-and-forth, change the plan and go back and change the plan again kind of a thing, maybe the only transportation, the only people that could apply for that funding would have to go through the Metropolitan Planning Organization, Forward Pinellas. Little cities couldn't do it, you know, so that it fits into, you know, they would work with PSTA, obviously, but it would fit into the long-term plans we already have. That way you wouldn't get so many little bites at the end. Just something to think about as you guys deliberate. Thank you.
Any final comments? Yes?
Thank you. My gut tells me that this conversation wasn't supposed to be about the 60-40. It was supposed to be about what happens with the capital monies, although it was dominated by the 60% for marketing. And I would just like to say that I don't think there's anybody that wants to see that split eroded. But I would say to you that being the hometown democracy poster child city as we are in St. Pete Beach, if you remember that, we've been fighting lawsuits for 12 years. I think there are projects out there that today don't even get brought to anybody's attention because statutorily they have to be funded, you know, the way it's described in the language. I don't see any harm in allowing all of these projects to be eligible. We can always say no, and I don't think any of us are saying that if we run out of capital, we're going to go rob the 60%. None of us are saying that, I know that. So from my perspective, I think we have to be a little bit open. There are other communities out there that are going to take advantage of this, and they're going to make improvements, and they're going to be more competitive than we are. And I think we're just limiting our options by not looking at it that way. Again, I think the conversation was dominated by the 60-40, and when I walked into this meeting, I assumed that was not going to change under any circumstances. If that's not the case, then that was a healthy discussion. We at least agreed on that. But, so my two cents would just be that, you know, I think there's a lot of great projects out there. We don't know what they are. We can always say no. There's a litmus test to even be eligible for the funds. It's pretty steep, so my comment would just be that.
Thank you, and I don't think there, is there any TDC member that wishes to change the split of the 60-40? Because I do think that's a very important point, and I just wanted to make sure. Raise your hand if you do. Okay. Any further comments from anyone? I want to sincerely thank you. This was a very productive meeting, and I appreciate each and every one of you and your leadership and your commitment to our tourism industry. It is critical to our economy and to our lifestyle. And as I always used to tell many, many years ago, many years ago since I was born and raised here, you know, I was complaining to my dad, and some of you have heard this story, and I'd be going like, "Oh, our streets are so clogged." And this would have been back in the '60s, before we got US 19 sort of fixed. And my dad turned to me and says, "Young lady, this is your bread and butter." And I have never forgotten that. So, thank you all so much, and we'll just take a short break. If you'd like to stay here for the North Pinellas Trail presentation, you're more than welcome to, TDC members, but if you have other business, then we certainly understand that. So we'll take a five-minute break.
Next part of our workshop, which is on the Pinellas County Trail, North County.
Correct. So the net, the, at the last time we discussed this, there were several issues raised concerning the safety of the crossing of 580. So we've asked staff to come back. So we have a short presentation from Ken regarding this particular trail loop.
I keep forgetting, sorry. So regarding the, so I'll just turn it over to Ken at this point, and he'll give you an update regarding the trail loop, some of the safety issues, some of the concerns that were raised at the last meeting.
Thank you, Barry. My name's Ken Jacobs with the Pinellas County Public Works Department with the Transportation Division. And, yes, we came about six weeks ago to the board and discussed the status of the north of the loop segment. Wanted to go into a little deeper dive on some of the issues that came out of that meeting and came out some of the discussions previous to that.
Wrong presentation.
That should work. That's not working. Other way? Oh, okay.
There.
All right. All one presentation. Didn't realize that. So just a general discussion to start off with, why we build trails, some of the history behind the Pinellas County Trail, or Pinellas Trail. In the early 1980s, there was a vision by Pinellas County Planning Department to build a trail that circumvented the county. The county would be responsible for the primary loop, which would be kind of like your collector roadway. It would collect and connect every, all the smaller segments of trail that might happen in a county. As part of that, the first thing, the first thing they had the opportunity to do is reclaim some abandoned rail line. And so Pinellas County was one of the first communities to do what they called rails to trails. So that really was incorporated most of the west side of the county. In the 1990s, another opportunity came around, and again, this is an effort to try and find large swashes of linear right-of-way to where we can put a trail, with the primary focus of segmenting the bicycles and pedestrian traffic away from vehicles. So one of the opportunities that came along in the 1990s was a public-private partnership with, at the time, Florida Power, is now Duke Energy. So an agreement was signed in 1999 with the county commission to put the, utilize the easement for the utility easements with Duke Energy and Florida Power at the time, to put the trail down that location. Some of the reasons to build a trail is public health, recreation, economic benefit, community pride and identity. But again, it comes down to, from our perspective, transportation-wide, taking the ped and bike traffic, pedestrian and bike traffic, and moving it away from the vehicle traffic as much as we can. So that's kind of where we're at with the trail. Currently, we have 48 miles of trail through nine cities, and most all of the local municipalities have their own local trail network that they're trying to build. And in almost all of those cases, they're trying to connect that local trail to the Pinellas County Loop. Right now, we're in the design of the north gap, which is, does that work? Is this segment right here? There's a small gap that we're under construction with, and then we have the south gap that is, we're in the planning stage for that, and we hope to complete that in the penny four timeframe over the next 10-year period. When you build the trail, there's several different ways to cross people. These are basically the four ways that we look to cross people, if they're on the trail, to cross the roadways that they need to transition. Obviously, the safest is the overpass. It's also the most expensive. We have signalized intersections. We have what's called a rectangular rapid flashing beacon. I might refer to it as a RRFB, so that's what I mean. You see them quite a bit on Gulf Boulevard. It's this arrangement right here. So it's, it's a, highlights the crossing and makes sure that the pedestrian is more visible. And then lastly, is just a plain crosswalk. We have some of those across local roads and that kind of thing. One of the things that has been a discussion point is, is a signalized crossing a safe way to cross the trail? And so we brought some information today. Obviously, there's no safer way, same thing with vehicular traffic, there's really no safer way to cross people than elevate one over the other. So there's no conflicts whatsoever. So that being the case, the next safest way is a traffic signal, and we believe it is safe. Traffic signal is a function of utilizing an electronic device to assign right-of-way. So when you get the green, it's your turn to go. If you get the walk, it's your turn to walk. So what we did do is we went over the accident data that we had. This covers the two-year period. There's several on the sheet that are the, what we would consider equivalent crossings to the ones, the three major crossings that we have on the north loop. As you see, three of them have no accidents, two of them had multiple accidents. But in all cases, the accident occurs with conflicting turning movement. So almost, almost 100% of the accidents that we have is when a right turn or a left turn crosses the pedestrian movement. And over the last five or so years, there's been a lot of activity in terms of ways to control those turning movements and make sure that those don't occur at the same time the pedestrian movement occurs. So that's one of the things that is included in the design for this. So there's just a summary. There was 17 accident, or 17 signalized intersections along the trail. Over the past five years, there was six accidents at those 17 intersections. And two of the, two of the intersections you see on the list attribute five of those accidents. So East Lake Road and Village Center Drive is one. We have been in the process, or we're already conducting a study along East Lake Road at those intersections to install some additional treatments. So we didn't know there was three until we did this study, but we did know that we wanted to savor up those crossings. Real quick summary on the north loop. On the north end is John Chestnut Park, which is where the current trail on East Lake Road ends. And then on the other end, on the south end, is Enterprise Road, and it's about a 6.8 miles worth of trail. We did receive a $5.7 million grant from, from the state called Sun Trail. And then we have committed $3 million in penny for Pinellas, penny $3 for this project. Another thing that comes up is, is how did we determine the best location for the trail? And looked at several different criteria for what makes a safe trail crossing. And it, in most cases, it, it's exactly what I said before, and that is you want to eliminate as many turning movement conflicts as you can. Where there's conflicts, there's accident potential. So that's, that's really key. And so there's a chart on the next page, but so it's maximize safety, connect to destinations. Certainly, from a construction standpoint, if it's easier to build, that's great for us. It's more economical. And Duke Energy Corridor is one of those places where you do have that big, long, linear piece of land where you can put it, put a trail down, and there's, that minimizes the amount of conflicts. This is a study that was done, and it kind of highlights, as much as anything else, it was done in 2007. And there was discussion about which, if you're using the Duke Energy easement as the way to cover the north gap, where, where would you get on the easement, off the easement, and that kind of thing? We did include McMullen-Booth, since that's one of the discussion, oops, sorry, one of the discussion points today. But there's really three. There's the green one, which is the actual Duke Energy easement. There's this one that cuts across and it's, goes off of Meadowwood and onto Countryside and then connects. And then there's Countryside Boulevard, I'm sorry. And then there is Landmark. So all, Countryside, Landmark, and the Progress Energy Trail at the time were evaluated as part of this study. McMullen-Booth was not at the time, and the reason was it didn't, from a generic standpoint, if you look at the criteria they were looking at, and I know it's hard to see, but the criteria were major street crossings, the number of cross-streets, the number of driveways, the traffic volume, and the posted speed. Those are the things that were considered criteria for determining what's the safest route. And if you look at McMullen-Booth, the volume is high, the speed is high, the number of driveways and conflict points is high. So it didn't move into the study phase for the alignment. But what that does do is it talks about the different alignments, Northside Drive, Meadowwood, and then if you wanted to deviate from that and go to Countryside or Landmark. The ultimate discussion, decision was that the preferred alternative was the Meadowwood option. So you take, you take the easement up to Meadowwood and then across the countryside and then, and then jump over to East Lake Road and across the Tampa Road. And so that was the one that came out of the study in 2007. Another item that has been discussed, again, is the signals, and this would be the, the major crossings at, at the north loop based on the current configuration. There's Countryside Boulevard, there's 580, Curlew Road, Tampa Road, and Boot Ranch. This kind of depicts the area from the beginning at Enterprise. You can see the, this is the Duke Energy easement. This is Enterprise here, Countryside Boulevard right here, and 580 right here. The green line is the alignment for the trail. So the proposed design at the 60% stage offered up a signal at, at several locations. The two new ones are Countryside Boulevard and Winding Wood Drive. We worked with the city of Clearwater. Countryside Boulevard in the area of the mall is a bit of a congestion issue. There's a roadway there. There is one signal into the mall. There's a cross-street called Village Center Drive that goes from Countryside Boulevard and Hooks to Enterprise that has a lot of traffic and a lot of turning movements. But this location is a secondary driveway into the mall, and it was felt like it would be the best opportunity to put in a signal. It would provide some traffic breaks for vehicles that are going down Countryside Boulevard, which would assist in the traffic at Village Center Drive. So the, the trail would come up through the easement, go across the south leg of the, of Winding Wood Signal, and then go across, and then go right over here. The trail actually goes right down the back edge of Countryside Mall, but this entire area right here is the Duke Energy One of the things that we will be doing as part of this project is turning restrictions. Again, we want to eliminate those conflicts. Turning movement conflicts are where the majority of the accidents occur. So one of the things that we do currently right now at a few intersections, but we would want to do it at all these travel, trail signals would be, basically, it's a no right on, when the symbol's up. So if somebody on the trail pushes the button, the right turns couldn't turn across. From a left turn perspective, all the signals that might conflict with a crossing would have a, what we call a restricted-only left turn. So they wouldn't be able to, to go at the same time as the trail crossing. So in a lot of respects, it, it makes it where it's almost like an exclusive pedestrian movement at that point in time. 580 is one of the ones that's, that we've discussed. Again, there's, there is an overpass option, although, and we've discussed it with the DOT. The DOT is supportive of the signal. One of the things that we discussed with them is a need to prioritize not just this location, but other trail locations that are crossing similar roadways, and come up with a prioritized list of overpasses that we would want to build in the future. This one is actually not a bad location, and the reason I say that, going back to the, what I've said before, is, is the turning movement conflicts at this location are very, very minimal. The only, the only movement that could occur at the same time as a pedestrian is this driveway into this condo complex, which is probably not more than 40 vehicles per hour during the AM and the PM peak. So other than that, there's, there's no turning movement conflicts that would occur at this location. So we do believe that a signalized intersection at this location would be, would be absolutely safe. Another thing that we want to do at this location and possibly others is to put, it's, it would be an advanced flasher in front of the signal. So if somebody pushes the trail button, there would be a, basically equivalent to a rectangular flashing beacon in advance of the intersection in both directions that would turn on and give the vehicles additional cue that there was going to be a pedestrian movement crossing at that point in time. Yes?
Yes, Commissioner.
Just want to make sure I understand that. So, so if somebody comes up to the crossing, hits the button, the yellow light flashing will start. The, the light itself, however, won't immediately change. I'm assuming it'll be going through its own cycle so that it's not continuing to, to change every time somebody comes and hits the button.
Well, usually, we will start that flashing once it gets to the clearance stage for the main street. So when, when the main street starts to turn yellow, the flasher would go on. So people on the main street would, would get a dual indication, but we can toy around with that. We could bring it up earlier or later, depending on how we wanted to do it in conjunction with the pedestrian.
Okay. And while I have you, any mid-crossing protector areas, or is that being considered?
From a design perspective, the mid, the mid-crossing at this particular location, because you do have this, oops, I knew I was going to do that. Because you do have this left turn that, that does go into the condo complex, that left turn is where you would want to put a mid-block median refuge. If you wanted to do that, we could certainly look at modifying the design, but what it would probably do is, it would probably make people go to this side. So walk this way and then cross here. Where this striped-out area is right here, we could certainly put a refuge across them, but then they would have to go back across. So the only other way to do that would be to eliminate this left turn, and, and that would cause a, an issue with that condo complex.
Just trying to think about the time to get across, and we have to accommodate for, you know, all folks, and some folks are a little slower, so.
Yes. And generally speaking, the way we would time this signal with, would be with the slowest pedestrian movement time that, that, that we would calculate. So the other thing about a refuge in the middle is if you're providing enough time for everybody to get across, you really don't necessarily want to leave them in the middle, because then you have to put pedestrian buttons and everything else in the, in the refuge also, just in case they get stuck out there. So we would prefer to put enough time in the, in the crossing to make sure that anybody could get across. could get across. This is Curlew Road. Again, this is one where it's a, it's a full, what we call an eight-phase controller, which means it's got left turns all the way around, it's got through movements all the way around. So each one of those movements has a associated pedestrian movement. So this is another one where we would want to restrict the, the right turns and the left turns across the trail crossing and make sure that it's as safe as going to be. Again, the amount of traffic on Curlew and at 580 is about 39,000 based on the ADT numbers that we got. But this is an existing signal. 580 and at Countryside would be new signals as part of the, as part of the installation of the trail. The other major location is Tampa Road. It actually has a little higher ADT, the crossing distance is probably a little bit less. I still want to look at this one for the final configuration of the, of the intersection and the turns, but same thing would hold true. We would turn, put turn restrictions, so it would almost be like an exclusive pedestrian movement. Just as an addition, this part right here is the bridge that does go across the Outfall Canal. So you, the trail comes up here, goes across it, the signal goes across the Outfall Canal and then continues north on the East Lake Road right-of-way on the west side and connects up to the John Chestnut Park. But it does go through a signal north of there called Boot Ranch. So that's the configuration you would see at Boot Ranch. There's some locations that, at this point in time, we're not, we're not positive whether it needs a signal or not. It's a much lower volume, it's a lower speed. One of the ones that I'm not really sure about and as part of the installation, it might go in with a RRFB, a rectangular rapid flashing beacon. But it's being designed to, if we determine that it needs to be signalized, then we can go out there fairly quickly and do that. Enterprise is probably the one that I'm, I'm concerned about, about all the ones you see on the list, but all those on the list, Enterprise, Northside Drive, Meadowwood, Countryside two times, the volumes and the speed at most of those are fine. Enterprise is a little borderline, so we'll, we'll monitor that one once it gets installed. But again, those were the, those are the full RRFBs, yes, with the flashing. So pedestrian would push the button and the flashing beacon would come on. Yes?
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to 580 again, please. This is one that obviously gives me the biggest heartburn. We, obviously we've set precedent in other areas of the county when we were doing, and I call this, I mean, it's really a mid-block crossing. It's not at an intersection. All the other ones, I'm going to say I think they're at intersections.
You are correct.
So this one causes me a little concern, especially as it relates to that interaction with that, that large townhome apartment complex. I think it's going to go right up against the entryway. I think you pointed that out a second ago.
This right here is a, is a condo complex, an existing condo complex.
That's their, that's their exit right there, isn't it?
It's not the only exit, but it's the only exit onto 580, yes.
And then the just-in-case comment you made that they're stuck in the middle and there could be all kinds of reasons that get them stuck in the middle. So again, I'm not saying that we want to encourage them to stop, but to me, if we're not going to talk, do an overpass there and we don't have a way to kind of bail somebody out, I think it's just really something that we're going to regret.
Well, again, we can, we're at 60%. We still have opportunity to modify the design. Like I said, one of the opportunities would be to go this way. The only difference there is you're actually then in conflict with that left turn. Again, it's not a high volume and we could restrict that. And then you would cross here, so it's, it's a, it's two crossings instead of one. We could certainly do that fairly easily. I'm not sure what we would have to do to put it on this side in the, in that straight through alignment. The only other way is to disassociate it with that driveway and possibly move it further to the, to the west. And, and we could look at that also.
And, and we, and we've gotten the ability, we know what the cost estimate of an overpass is and the second thing is, do we have the ability with, with Duke Energy to actually build an overpass if that's what we chose to do?
There are limitations if you're in the easement. We think there's a way, there's ways to modify the design to where technically when it's in the air, it's not in the easement. So it's, it's feasible. The general cost from a, from what we've heard from our contractor for a pedestrian overpass is, is between three and five million depending on the, the difficulty of the design. And this would tend towards the higher amount because it's very possible you might have to can lever over to stay out of the easement or something like that. So I, that's, that's the estimate that we've been given. Even if we, and, and certainly if the overpass is something that, that we will want to move forward with, we can get an exact cost of that. I'm not really sure that I would, where we're, where we are with the contractor right now, I don't know that it would be a very cost-effective thing to just add to their contract. It'd probably be something that we would want to go ahead and have designed and built through the design bid-build process. But, but it's certainly something that, that we could move forward with if that's a, that's a concern.
Thank you.
Let's see, Enterprise. One of the other discussion items was how close the, the trail would be to some homes. This is the Northwood Drive area. This right here is the existing sidewalk and if you see these two standards, they're pedestals for some kind of utility. But the proposal is to actually widen it out, but widen the entire thing towards the road. So the back of the sidewalk is where the, back of the existing sidewalk is. So we're not moving closer to the homes, it's just a wider sidewalk in the area of Meadowwood. And this was communicated to the, to the folks at Meadowwood during the, during the public meeting and we also had a walkthrough of the project with the, with anybody that wanted to show up from the Meadowwood subdivision, or condo complex. So again, it's no closer to the road. It's a, it's going from a four-foot sidewalk to an eight-foot sidewalk, but it, it's widening towards the roadway. On the area of the easement, there was some discussion about how close it would be to anybody's home. We've basically told the contractor that they're required to provide a minimum distance between the trail and any private property of 25 feet. So you can see that is basically where we've, in a lot of cases, that's where they light it out, is it's 25 feet from, from the property lines. There was some discussion about crime. What, what, we've talked to several of the, the Ford Pinellas folks and have, have a, a security task force that, that they ran quite early when the trail was, was being built and they continue to meet. One of the things is that the, it involves law enforcement. And so what, what the consensus is by the law enforcement folks is, they don't say that there's no crime on a trail, but they say that it's more of an influence of the surrounding area. So if, if the trail goes through a high crime area, it will have a similar crime statistic on the trail. If it goes through an area where you have very low crime, then the crime should be just equal to the surrounding area. And again, it's, the trail is, is patrolled by local police, auxiliary rangers and the trail users. So again, from all the data that we've seen and, and from what we hear from the law enforcement folks, it's more of a function of the area and not the trail. And that's also, the, the report that it shows up there was done, I believe it was a 2008, a 2001 study and it was done after the completion of the entire west side of the trail and a consultant was commissioned to look at and pull data relative to the crime statistics and the, the home values, which had come up at, at the time they were building the, the west side of the trail. And so that study basically concluded the same thing. So we have the study, but we're also hearing from, from the law enforcement folks right now that, that that's basically the case. Property values, same thing that, when they did the study for the trail in 2001, it actually showed very possibly a minor increase in the, in the number, in the value of houses adjacent to the trail. But over time, we basically looked at it as term, in terms of it's an amenity. Some people like that amenity, some people don't. So if, so you're as much, you have as much chance of attracting somebody that, that does want a direct access to the trail, that's, that's health-conscious and, and wants to utilize their bikes and, and walk and, and so therefore they're willing to pay for that amenity, just like you would any other. And some people, it's not their thing, so they might not so. But there's generally no statistical difference between home values adjacent to the trail versus none. So basically where we're at right now is, like I said, where you have the 60% plans complete for the trail. That goes down the Duke Energy easement, that crosses over at Meadowwood, goes up Countryside Boulevard, connects to East Lake and then on up to, across the Tampa Road and on up to John Chestnut Park. At this point in time, the, the contractor has developed and is, is in the process of submitting what he calls a guaranteed maximum price. It's a design-build project, which means he provides us with, okay, this is the price that we can build this for. That needs to be approved by the, by the board. If the board decides that it's too much money or they don't want to proceed, then we can terminate the contract with the contractor and proceed in whatever fashion after that that we want. They just hand over the 60% plans to us. So the project construction was, is meant to, to start as soon as we provide, the board provides a notice to proceed to the contractor. If they find the guaranteed maximum price acceptable, then they give the contractor a notice to proceed and he can start basically right after that. He's already pulled all the necessary permits he needs, so he can go ahead and start. Project must be completed, at least the current agreement that we have with the DOT relative to the SunTrax funding is that it's supposed to be completed by the summer of 2020. We don't know that that's, that's of an issue. We can probably get an extension since we think it'll take more like 18 months to complete the construction. And with that, I'll leave you with just as, as I want to, I know you'll probably have some questions, but I, I wanted to offer up a couple of different people in the audience that have some expertise. We have Kim Craven, is he around?
Yep.
Here's Kim, he's with Duke Energy. He's their expert on EMF. So if you have a question about EMF or would like to hear about that, Kim would certainly be able to help you. And then we also have Brian Smith and with the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee and Scott Daniels, who's the president of Trails Inc. So, and of course Whit Blanton, who's Ford Pinellas, who is, you know, basically between these two guys over here is where the brainchild of the Pinellas Trail comes from and our impetus to complete the loop.
So I have a question, which is, you gave the presentation about new traffic signals that'll be installed. Are those all in the budget already?
They'll be in the guaranteed maximum price, yes.
Okay.
So it is part of the design, the two new signals.
Okay. And you mentioned on State Road 580 that we would have to partner with FDOT.
Uh, no.
I know sometimes they're sticky about putting new traffic signals in, so how?
No, I'm sorry. They, they've already approved the traffic signal.
Okay.
We, we partnered with them and the partnering actually came, came back with, gee, you know, this is a location where we think might end up needing a, an overpass and, and that's where the discussion about, we need to prioritize all our trail locations and, and come up with a prioritized list.
Uh huh.
So we can participate with the DOT. To give you an example, at the Courtney Campbell Trail, as it comes across, it actually goes across a signal at, at Felipe Parkway. And that was, that became active probably a year, year and a half ago. And the pedestrian movement worked well at the signal, but because of the large volume of pedestrians, the DOT wanted to go ahead and, and do a pedestrian overpass there. So that became their number one priority. So they've actually funded that and they're in the process of doing that design. So we want to get that prioritized list so we can provide that to the DOT in the same manner.
Okay, that's good news about Courtney Campbell. I just was, noticed that the other day, watching the bicyclists trying to go over that roadway. So Enterprise, the flashing beacon is the only, I agree with you, that's a concern to me because, you know, Enterprise is a winding road and sometimes people don't slow down before they hit that. It's no longer a direct access to US 19.
Correct.
But it, you know, again, thank you for taking a look at that with the traffic volumes and trying to decide if that's the right approach.
Right. And, and that one again is currently in the 60% design as a, as a RRFB, but we basically told them to design it in such a fashion where if we wanted to, we could have it operating as a signal within a week.
Okay. Let's take any questions at this point from the county commission and then I'd like to open it up to the public and then after that, the county commission can make their final comments. Anybody have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Ken. You had a slide that showed a sidewalk expansion and you were showing it was spanning towards the street. And I noted in the, I guess the online petition, and because it's searchable, Della, I could go search for four feet and found it. Someone mentioned the trail would be four feet from their grandmother's living room and dining room windows. Is that possible? Do we have a minimum distance away from the actual house or structure?
The closest, this, this particular segment is, is the closest that we would get to any.
So the four foot is not accurate?
No, and I think that was an initial comment and again, that was probably something that was an initial concern, but then the design team went out and met with everyone. So I don't, I don't know if that still exists.
So what's the minimum distance away from a property line or the actual structure?
On the easement, it's that 25 feet I was talking about, but this, this, oops, I'm sorry. This is the closest as far as I, as I'm aware that it gets to a structure that's, that's inhabited.
Okay. Well, I've seen closer than that in St. Pete.
Uh huh. Yeah, so that, again, this was a, a concern and it was, it was met, and that was what we met with the residents with and explained to them that it was going to be wider, but it was, it was actually moving this way. So there's a berm right here and the sidewalk will actually be further down, there's actually a little lip here, so it's, it's, it's definitely away from the houses and, and no closer.
So does each city set their own setback restrictions?
We have sidewalk setback restrictions as part of our, our land development code. So as long as we're meeting.
Let me get with you later, but in sections of St. Pete, right on the trail, say right off 18th Avenue South, it's much closer than that. And I don't know, maybe that's the St. Pete Trail versus the Pinellas?
Right.
Okay.
The permitting is, is where those restrictions would come from. So if it's a Pinellas County unincorporated, it would go under our land development code and our permitting.
Okay. Okay.
So St. Pete may have, uh, let them go ahead and build that relative to that.
Okay.
Specific location.
Thank you.
Commissioner Eggers?
Yeah. Yeah, we just wanted to take a look at the, the north side versus the Meadowwood, because when I, when I look at north side and, um, first of all, it takes you further down Countryside Boulevard, which there is just a ton of right of way there. Um, ton, that's not re, a very good description. But there's lots of right of way on Countryside Boulevard where the sidewalk is now, so that if you move that four feet or five feet closer to the road, you still probably got 20 feet from the road. Um, then when you get to north side itself, um, and you get to, the distance from there to the trail is about the same as when it is up at Meadowwood from, when you get on there. But it, when you get to the trail, it's just a straight shot down to Countryside Boulevard. And then, the only thing, and I stopped and I've walked it several times now and I've driven it and kind of looked, and when you look back to the north on north side, you s, and you know that it's going to be taking these turns, that just, that seemed a little problematic. Do you have any comments about those juts in, anywhere along our system that you're familiar with that, that talks to, you know, the safety and security differences in those little areas? Cause it's just a little nook that takes a turn, it's kind of out of the way and, you know, not, not as visual. So, uh, I kind of, I kind of, I'm kind of intrigued by the north side, uh, opportunity as opposed to the, as opposed to the Meadowwood, so.
I, I, I did go back and, and kind of reviewed the, I think you had mentioned north side, uh, during our last discussion. Generally speaking, the only difference between the two, uh, again, you're trying to minimize conflicts and there's about, uh, uh, if you do the, the, two things about Meadowwood is you are utilizing the, uh, the Duke easement, uh, which, which does assist in terms of ease of construction and that kind of thing, to the fullest extent you can, uh, before you run into the private easements. Uh, but, uh, there's more crossings of roadways if you do the, uh, north side alignment.
Minor roadways.
About five additional minor crossings.
Minor, minor roads, yeah.
That's correct.
Okay.
So that, honestly, those are the only two, uh, differences between the two.
Thank you.
Well, I know there are an awful lot of jogs in the city of Clearwater, doesn't show up on this map, but holy cow. And cr, and street crossings, which, you know, if you're on the trail to exercise, it's really a pain. So I, I don't think it's, I would have preferred a, a straight line there, but, you know, that might have been the city. Uh, yeah, there's, there's a lot of jogs.
Yeah, through the city of Clearwater, it, it was, uh, a little bit of a, a, a difficulty because the, the, the rail bed basically ran down the middle of the street. And so we didn't have the exact same opportunities that we did with the other segments. Uh, so there's certain segments of the Clearwater that were, uh, to provide that connectivity was kind of squeezing it in the best we could.
Any other further questions at this point? Okay. Um, to our citizens, we have the dius up here, if you would mind going up there to make your comments, um, because we are recording this and so we want to make sure we get everything that you wish to say. Um, we will start with Scott Bressler. And, um, Scott, you'll have three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
And I have a little hourglass.
Okay.
Welcome.
Go ahead. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for the opportunity to speak today. Um, Commissioner Egger, Eggers took the, uh, question related to the proposed route, uh, right out of my mouth, um, of the proposed route, which I am against by the way. But if it was to come to the proposed route, which is the Duke Energy Power Lines, um, the North Side Drive, uh, option instead of Meadowwood, um, there's actually, I don't know if it'd be considered a small lake or a large pond, but right on the corner of North Side Drive and Countryside is half the distance between where the proposed trail would come up to North Side and Countryside Boulevard. So half of that distance would, there's only a, like I say, that large pond there. So that is benefit in that no one would have, it would not be interfering with anyone. If you wanted to move not closer to the road, you could move closer to the pond and not interfere with anything. Uh, there's also only two homes between the pond and where the trail would go. So those, only two homeowners would be impacted, uh, on the North Side Drive. But it's also a straighter shot and I, and I know there's only one entrance into those two homes that I mentioned, that particular neighborhood. At Meadowwood, there might be two crossings, I'm not sure, before you get to Countryside. So firmly believe that North Side is the much better option. Um, but again, overall, I'm here to speak, uh, in, I'm totally in support of the trail, completion of the trail, but I'm a firm believer that with the resources, food, beverage, restaurants, grocery stores, the hospital, the north substation of the Clearwater Police Department, all of these available resources along McMullin Booth. And I hate to say it, but whether you like it or not, there's already a precedent on East Lake Road. Continue down, and yes, there are turns in and off, turns in and off of McMullin Booth, but I think the cost to eliminate some of those turns and use the frontage road concept, if you know what I'm talking about with 19, when an overpass goes in, you can direct some of those turns down to one local area. Maybe three or four of the turns can go to one area to turn onto and off of McMullin Booth. You can eliminate a lot of that issue along McMullin Booth with guardrails. And the overall cost of making McMullin Booth safer is much lower than making the Duke Energy Power Lines, uh, what it needs to be with rain shelters, water fountains, restrooms, overpasses, hundreds of thousands of dollars into a traffic signal. Um, we're talking lots of costs to make Duke, Duke Energy Power Lines, uh, what it needs to be, in my opinion. And I think at a much lower cost, you can make McMullin Booth the safe route and continue straight down East Lake Road. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have three minutes. Bruce Rumble will be speaking for 10 minutes. He has, he's representing, um, five other citizens. Plus himself, so six altogether. Oh, 10, yeah, 10 minutes? Okay.
Just here, we're here.
Okay.
First off, thank you for having us. I'm here with, uh, Val Ventos, HOA, and many other, uh, folks that live along the trail and in Pinellas County, who, um, are pretty much against this current route. We did suggest the route that goes through, um, Enterprise up to McMullin Booth Road here. Here, and up there. And like Scott said, it, it, there is a precedence with, uh, it already being there on East Lake Road. And, um, with that said, you know, it, if we're worried about traffic intervention with bicycle riders, just like up on East Lake Road, they put, um, barriers up in the, alongside the trail, so a car could not possibly get to the, somebody on the trail. Also, uh, if you're worried about turning situations with, um, uh, traffic at lights, uh, just like at Curlew and Alt 19 on the trail, there is the no-turn signal that pops up that a rider can push. So therefore, we have eliminated, um, all the problems that Mr. Jacobs was saying that, why we never considered, um, McMullin Booth Road. It, um, has, you know, plenty of low speed, um, slash, uh, volume, um, driveways, they're calling our streets. Uh, but those are basically about the same amount, maybe a couple higher. And, um, I've looked that up and jotted it down, made a spreadsheet on it, and the, the amount is nearly same, it's not that bad. So I concur with everything, uh, I don't concur with everything that Mr. Jacobs said, except for the, the problem is congestion. We have a serious congestion problem with traffic these days in this area. When this was designed back in the nineties, it wasn't nearly as bad. If you put a traffic light up on 580, another one, everybody going to work from Dunedin, using 580, coming home, it, it's going to be a massive backup, just a, a serious backup that, uh, I'm sure a lot of us are not going to want to endure. There, there's, there's just, you know, I, I don't understand why this route is, is the current chosen route, because it's basically the worst route because of amenities available and the cost is the highest. This is the highest cost route that they're proposing at this point. Um, it's going to cause traffic congestion, um, you know, it's, it's too close to homes. Uh, the beacons, uh, all, all the use of all the beacons, a lot of people don't understand beacons. Uh, they, they drive along and, uh, see a flash and yellow light and they, they think it's a tow truck or something. Um, you know, people come down from up north and driving all over the place here and they don't, nobody's familiar with beacons up there. So that's, it's going to be, um, a real challenge like that. On the Duke Energy easement, there's a high, um, level of, uh, chance of, uh, lightning, um, at night, let's say if we put the trail through there, there's going to be a huge influx of crime and vagrants coming through there at night. And it won't be patrolled as well as if you were going down McMullin Booth Road, which will have constant surveillance and constant ex, access for EMS. A lot of, a lot of folks, uh, don't understand and don't know about the effects of EMF, EMFs on, uh, your body and childrens. Uh, uh, children have, it's a, um, huge, uh, cause of childhood leukemia, they're saying, in, in many different cases. So EMS are, are a bad thing and, uh, they're, they're, they're worse than a lot of people tend to, uh, know about. Um, there's, there's, um, I, I would have to say that there's data on both sides of the street. We haven't weighed it out yet completely. So, uh, part of the cost being much less, there's some beautiful sidewalks along McMullin Booth Road right now and all they need to be done is, is widen. They're in great shape right now and just extend the, the difference there. There won't be any, um, problems with lights, they're already in place. The only thing you could add is the no-turn lights to help, um, um, prevent an accident. Another problem with going down the Duke Energy easement is the wildfires, that somebody could create, a, a match thrown out into the yard, uh, there and, and the whole easement goes on fire. We've already experienced these problems. The noise and the, the privacy has gone to all the residents along that easement. It, it's, it's very nice place right now and, uh, I, we love it the way it is and we don't want to see it change. Um, after all these years, uh, probably 50 years of that easement being there, it's been no trespassing. There's no trespassing signs all along that easement. And so why is it a no trespassing easement now? And now we're going to turn around and let everybody in? It's, it's like night and day. The, uh, one of the benefits of, of going the route that I'm discussing here is it can be continued easily, southbound on McMullin Booth Road and tie-in with the Courtney Campbell Trail. That and also the Ream Wilson Trail. And that to me is a huge asset. One of the parts of the trail in Pinellas was to, um, look, look at hooking up to other counties. And here you can easily do that. Uh, and if you, if you don't go this route and if you say that you want to, uh, connect to the Courtney Campbell Trail, then you're just going to have to add that on to this route or down 60 to the current trail. Anyhow, um, a lot of bikers, and I'm a biker myself and I know a lot of bikers and bicyclists, that is, and they don't want to ride under power lines. They, they don't want to ride in a barren desert that's under power lines, it's just not healthy. The attraction to vagrants and vagrancy and crime going on at night down this trail will be high. Also wanted to mention, um, that there was a fatality on the Duke Trail, uh, this last May. And that was, uh, it was at a crossing. Um, and in one question, um, Mr. Jacobs says he pulled, uh, permits, uh, you know, it's a county project, what permits are we talking about? And was there a swift mud, mud pull, uh, permit pulled? So, you know, with, with all this said, there's, there's umpteen reasons why we should not put this down, the Duke Energy easement. And like I said at the beginning, this, the congestion is so high and so absolutely ridiculous that putting any bike trail, anything for bikers going through here is hazardous. Uh, it, it, it almost makes me wonder why we have to complete this trail at all. I know we're getting the funding for it, I know we have monies available, we've gone this far and it sounds beautiful, but the problem is going to be when there's fatalities and accidents where people's, people are maimed and, um, it's just not going to be pretty. And so therefore, some of my suggestion on this, on this whole thing is you either go the route that we're talking about or, or, okay, and, and, and/or do nothing. If you do nothing, we're going to save a lot of money and a lot of lives at the same Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, sir.
Hello, thank you for allowing me to speak. Um, I just am curious and I'm kind of reiterating what some of the other people and council members already mentioned. How did you arrive at the decision to come down Meadowwood instead of continuing on the Duke easement to Curly Road? You, you noted that one of your main criteria for, for the decision was, um, left turn, right turn danger points. Going down Meadowwood, you'll have four danger points instead of continuing on down the Duke easement to Curly Road. Now, once you go down the Duke easement onto Curly Road, you'll make a right down Curly Road. You'll have that one crossing over Countryside Boulevard. If you continue one block down further, there's a lovely little park there, and then there's also a pedestrian bridge over Curly Road. And then they can come back up the one block, so they could rest at the park, enjoy the park. They probably should add the, uh, the BioFlex equipment back in there that they used to have. And, and that will solve the problem and you'll avoid four danger points, which you said was your primary criteria in the decision-making process. So that's the main question. Also, if you come down Meadowwood, no matter, even if you extend out that sidewalk, you're not going to have that 25-foot easement that you're talking about down the Duke, that 25-foot standoff that you'll have if you continue down the Duke easement. So four danger points. And by the way, Saint Tropez, that other condominium complex on the other side, that only has one entrance in and out. That's the primary entrance. There is no secondary entrance to, to Saint Tropez. There's two for Chateau. There's two for Chateau Woods, but only one for Saint Tropez. So you're going to, the one danger point will be the back of Chateau Woods. The second one will be crossing Countryside Boulevard. The third one is a cul-de-sac with a bunch of homes that they're going to have to come out and the fourth one will be Saint Tropez. So based on the criteria that you mentioned, I'm not sure how you arrived at the decision rather than just going, continuing down the Duke easement. And like I said, you come out the Duke easement, you make the right on Curly, you only have one crossing point, Countryside and Curly. Then it can go down one block, you have the park and you have a pedestrian bridge going over Curly Road. That's it. And the commissioner also mentioned that you're going to have people walking right past people's windows. You know, it's just, and the potential for accidents. All right, thank you.
Brian Smith? Okay. Maybe?
I can certainly try. Some of the things that were brought up, I can kind of address some of them. The backup on 580, if we put a signal there, because it's a mid-block pedestrian, it really only has what we call two phases. So we're passing east-west traffic and we're passing the pedestrians north-south. So the total time that it takes for those is a lot less to accommodate those than it does the two signals on either side at Countryside and at Somerdale. So when you're doing timing for signals, the congestion really is at those highest congested intersections and in this case it'd be Countryside. So we don't see any additional congestion on, if we were to add that additional signal. The Eastlake, existing Eastlake Trail, yes, we have existing Eastlake Trail. The right-of-way is much wider in the Eastlake Road area. There's a ditch between the roadway and the trail. That doesn't necessarily exist south of there, but, and intentionally, there was a guardrail installed the entire length of that section. So in terms of cost, we did do an estimate for the amount of guardrail that you'd have to do if you went down McMullen-Booth and just the guardrail alone would be around $900,000. So just as an aside. And then one thing just to straighten out, you really can't just widen a sidewalk. You can't take an existing sidewalk and pour another one next to it. What tends to happen is you have that joint down the middle and that joint can be a very difficult thing for bikes. It can cause bikes to fall and get stuck. So even on the existing trail that we're proposing, if there is existing sidewalk, we would tear that out and put in a brand-new sidewalk to make that work. To speak to the Duke easement, honestly, I didn't do the alignment study. It was, it actually came out of the MPO, it was several years ago, but in reading it, the Duke easement goes, is actually Duke's property up until you get to Meadowwood. North of there, it is actually the property owner's property and Duke has a utility easement that's over the top of that. So that was part of the reason this alignment study was done was if that becomes a difficulty, being able to get all those easements through all those, and each one of those homeowners has a, has property on that easement. So we would have to go through and either buy right-of-way or get easements with every single one of those property owners to be able to go north of Meadowwood. So that was part of the decision when they did the alignment study to look at other alternatives. And so that's where the Meadowwood and the northside alternatives came from. So use the Duke Energy easement as far as you can go with it. The four conflict, conflict points that you're talking about, we don't disagree. They're minor conflict points, but they, you know, it's one of those where we try and minimize, we can't always minimize. We try and stay away from high-volume, high-speed driveways where that conflict is much more significant. If it's a residential road that services five or six houses, that's one thing, but if it's, you know, a major roadway that everybody is coming out to a subdivision from a subdivision onto Countryside Boulevard, we look at that differently.
I'm sorry to say I left my traffic count map in my car. So I carry it with me every day.
I have mine right here.
What are the volumes, and maybe you'll have to look it up, but what are the volumes south on McMullen-Booth Road, south of, let's say, Curly, well, let's say, south of Tampa Road versus north of Tampa Road? Because I believe south of Tampa Road, as my recollection, is much busier than north.
The last one I looked at, and I did look at the count map this morning just to look, it's actually a little bit higher on the Eastlake section. It's about 64,000 right now. And in the segment just north of Enterprise, it's 60,000.
60,000?
No. Again, there could be an annual variation just because of some construction activity that might have occurred, but that's generally what you see for those volumes.
Okay, Commissioner Eggers?
Yeah, on the signal issue of congestion, can we talk about that? Excuse me. You talked about the fact that you don't have the crossing, you know, traffic, so the cycle's shorter than it would be at an intersection. I guess I understand that part, but how often will it allow, say, I'm riding with somebody and we cross and then, you know, 100 feet behind us, somebody's walking and now the lights turn and they hit the button, how quickly are they going to be allowed to switch it? Because I know on those rapid, the, what's the initials again?
R-R-F-B.
There you go, R-R-F-B. That, you can hit it and then somebody gets across and you hit it again and you hit it again? So the question is, is how will that work with the traffic light as it relates to traffic movement on 580?
My preference is that the pedestrian, once they hit the button, for safety purposes, should wait until we can pass the traffic back and forth from Somerdale and Countryside. That means they may incur delay there. The other way to do it, and it can certainly be done, is when somebody pushes the button for the trail movement, then it immediately cycles. If you do that, you can run into instances where you're stopping large volumes of 580 traffic at that signal, which is not necessarily my preference.
Yeah, you're at about 40,000 on, I think, on.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Gerard? I have a question about McMullen-Booth and do we know how many cross streets and, more importantly, driveway crossings there are? Because there's an awful lot of businesses there.
Yes, and we did a count and basically there's about 30 driveways that go into businesses. So not that many, I think there's about, the total is 46 crossings, down McMullen and down Enterprise, versus the 23 that we had if you go up the alignment. But almost all of the crossings on the Duke Energy alignment, other than signals, are what we consider minor residential.
Hey, thank you. And next is Brian Smith.
Thank you, I'm Brian Smith. I'm here speaking for not only the Bike Pedestrian Committee for the county, but also, I was the county planning director for 30-some years and so worked with the Pinellas Trail from the beginning of day one. And I'd like to first of all compliment Ken, I think he pretty much covers the subject of the different things pretty well, considering he wasn't here for part of the time, so. One of the things I'd mention is that the Pinellas Trail, a lot of these solutions, safety solutions we talk about, which are nationally recognized solutions, were ones invented through the Pinellas Trail program. For instance, the RFP, they call it, that was something that St. Pete broke the ice on, it was not permitted to be used. And St. Petersburg did that along the Pinellas Trail way back almost 15, 20 years ago to kind of get it used up. And when, and it had a response time of something like 50 or 60 percent. Now it's over 90 percent when people stop for those flashing things. And so the other things are the right turns on red, no ride on red. Those are things that were also worked out over the years, like with the intersection of Curly Road, the Pinellas Trail and Alt.19, there's a very conflagrant sort of converging of issues there. And so we've experimented with a lot of different issues, no ride on red and various other procedures. So the countdown procedure was also invented here. So there's a lot of different things that were done. And it had to do with the Pinellas Trail put the Bike Pedestrian Program into the spotlight in terms of safety. That's why a lot of, you had a lot of other crossings, the pedestrian would push, pedestrian walk along the street, they'd just wait until they, push about until they could cross. They'd wait till their turn. Where the Pinellas Trail was, it was recognized as a transportation facility, so you didn't have somebody waiting five or 10 minutes to cross the road or something like that. You actually had more of a priority for it. So there's a lot of things like going like that that Pinellas County did. We're looking at currently the Pinellas Trail, the Pinellas Trail has a use now of like, I think it's something like 150,000 people a month use the Pinellas Trail. And like two-thirds of the people pretty much are doing, not recreation trips, they're doing shopping trips, work trips, things like that. So we're, it's become, you could say the Pinellas Trail has become a part of our identity. But one of the most important things is, the Pinellas Trail was invented originally because we wanted a safe place for people to go. That's why we picked up on the rail corridor from St. Pete to Clearwater, 34 miles. That was the first section built. And then later, when we realized we had a good thing going, we wanted to have a more important corridor on the east side, we came up with agreement with Karen Seal's help where we had like an agreement with Duke Energy for like a 99-year lease to basically have another 20-mile corridor to put in. The idea, if you kept people on the corridor, they'd be safe and all, they only have to, the only time they interchange with people would be with cars, would be when they have a road crossing. And I might say we perfected that pretty well. That gets me to the point where we say like, I think now the current proposal or the preferred alternative is the best one to use. The reason we didn't stay on Duke Energy for pretty much the rest of it was because Duke Energy didn't own the property. But the idea is a Duke Energy Trail, that's the theme that's in it. I might also point out that we call the Pinellas Trail Loop. And there was, I'd say in the 1990s, we realized we had over 200 miles, 250 miles worth of trails in the county. Not all the trails built by Pinellas County, some by Clearwater, some St. Petersburg, but there wasn't any definition to the program. That's when we came up with the Pinellas Trail Loop. So on the west side, you've got the existing Pinellas Trail. On the east side, you have the Duke Energy Corridor. And then we've kind of looped it up on the top and bottom to make a complete loop. That sort of made sense to the system, then you could have the other connections from the beaches and downtowns into this or other destinations. Pretty much the theme I'm saying is that what you've now got before you is a pretty much hashed-out solution.
You've used your three minutes?
Oh, sorry. I didn't see a like mark, sorry about that.
You can conclude if you wish, please.
Okay, I'll conclude, just say that we really hope that you would continue the program as proposed.
Anthony Isabella had some questions, so if you could please come to the dais, that would be appreciated.
Hi there, thank you. Actually, it was follow-up questions to two points that Bruce had brought up regarding the permits. It was suggested to us that there were permits pulled. I got curious as to which permits were pulled. It's a county project. And also you didn't, Bruce mentioned a fatality. That was not mentioned on your discourse either. And I'm just wondering why. That's it, thank you very much. And just for the record, I'm in favor of the trail, I'm just not in favor as they're
As part of the 60 percent plans, the contractor has to get all the necessary permits in place because once it's accepted, he can go ahead into construction and they do have the SWIFT mud permits in hand, so, or at least that's what I've been told, so they can go ahead and give us the GMP. There was a fatality at nursery in the trail about a month, month and a half ago. We're doing a study. Fatalities happen, accidents happen. It's one of those where we're still waiting on the police report to determine exactly what the situation was and figure out if there's anything that we need to do to soften up that crossing. The reason I didn't mention it is because the slide and the discussion was specific about signals and that was a unsignalized, un-location and we're looking at it to see if there shouldn't be a R-R-F-B installed, but they're doing that study right now.
Okay, those are all the cards that I have of people who wish to speak. So at this point, I'll turn it over to the county commission for your comments and direction. And I'll start with Commissioner Eggers.
Well, first of all, I wanted to thank the residents for asking and the commission allowing the pause to look at this because, you know, it's been some time since we as a group have looked at this project and it is a 6.5 to 7-mile commitment. So first of all, thank you for raising the questions and representing your communities. I am obviously from a community that has embraced the trail for all the reasons that have been mentioned here today, from property values to safety, critically important to the community that I used to represent and I still do, but exclusively. And it has only been an asset. It has only been a huge, huge plus to our community and I would argue through many of the communities throughout Pinellas County. And we continue to look at not only our own county and how we get everybody to participate in that beautiful trail. That'd be one thing you wouldn't want to ever change because people would come out of everywhere to stop that because they love their trail. But we are also connecting, we're connecting to the statewide trail, we're connecting to Hillsborough County. And so there's a lot of effort.
Pasco, too.
Yeah, excuse me, yeah, through Pasco up to the state trail. So there's a lot of effort and energy and interest by our residents to do this. And I think most of the folks that are here today support all of that in terms of expanding trail usage. Maybe not all of you, I don't want to speak for you, but I think most people understand the benefit and beauty of the trails. And this is a particularly important area, so to the extent that as an option not to do it, I would not support that at all. I think that the, I just, again, I've been down this McMullen-Booth thing a couple times walking and, well, I drive by it all the time, but from a perspective of watching it and looking at it, I just don't see how that's even possible. Now, I understand physically some of the things that have been brought up, but the nearness, the closeness to the road is just horrifyingly scary. Some of the engineering and levels of grade difference from where the road is to where the sidewalk is, is I don't think you can overcome it. One thing we haven't talked about is the countryside soccer fields, which have huge uses, hundreds and hundreds of cars there. And the conflict and interaction between that and the trail on a Saturday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday alone scares me and who's got priority and precedent? So, and then when you get down to the commercial, and so I'm not, I can't support McMullen-Booth in that area. I'm very comfortable with the route that's going. I would like to see further consideration to the northside loop. I am, again, I think we should immediately, if we're going to move forward with this, I think we should immediately look at putting a crossover at 580. I am scared to death about that in so many ways. I think we all have great intentions and if everything works like it's supposed to, it will have no problems. But as traffic, as we all know, with traffic, it doesn't. So from my perspective, I think if we can get some certainty on how the traffic light's going to work so we don't congest 580, I think that's number one. If we can, if we can make sure that we have a place of last resort, if you want to call it that, in the middle, some kind of island, I just know that that has come into huge play, even on a two-lane road, Alt.19 at Weaver Park in Dunedin. In fact, we would have had a couple fatalities if it hadn't been for that refuge right in the middle. And nobody likes to stop there, but it's that one time where, actually a car went flying over top of it and they ducked down behind the rail, it gave them the protection that they needed. that they needed. So people don't behave in cars like they're supposed to, go figure, have you heard that one before? So I'm definitely supportive of the, I would like to look at north side as the alternative, and I'd like to move forward immediately with getting monies or setting aside monies for a crossover at 580. And those are just my initial thoughts. Thank you.
I guess I don't, could you show me on that map, the difference between the Meadow Wood and the north side drive?
I know, it's difficult.
Yeah. Uh-huh. And the green?
The green is the proposed, is Meadow?
This is north side. This is that lake that gentleman talked about.
Okay, okay, so that's?
That's north side.
That's Meadow Wood.
That's north side.
Can you zoom in on that slide?
No, it was Meadow Wood.
I already tried.
Okay, but anyway, I had, okay. I just had some comments. I think just in general, I'll figure that one out later, I'm not all that familiar with that neighborhood, but, you know, I think the trails were, trails, we refer to them as linear parks. I think if you put the trail next to a heavily trafficked road, you defeated the purpose of having a linear park. You know, you don't have to ride on the trail if you're afraid of, what do they call those? EMFs? Fine, go the other way. But I don't, I don't believe that I would use a trail that's on a sidewalk next to a route that has sixty thousand cars a day going on it. I just think that's, that defeats the whole purpose. So I like the path that you've taken there. I think Commissioner Long could tell you that the trail is very safe when it goes behind homes, she lives right close to one. I think sometimes the, we need to do what we can do on the streets to be safe, and maybe we need to fully signalize the 580, and then to ask for an overpass, but, you know, sometimes it's the trail people that are not obeying the rules. And I've seen many, many people just blast through, over a road on the trail with hardly even looking left and right, but then it's on them. But I agree with what you're doing there.
Commissioner Long?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I can only speak from personal experience, but you wouldn't believe it today. As my kids were growing up, I spent hours and hours on that trail, and would go twenty miles a day on rollerblades. The biggest fear in my little rollerblading life was going up and down the overpasses, because I did have an acquaintance who fell, I mean, you know, we all have to be responsible for our own safety, and this woman fell, rollerblading, going over the overpass, hit her head, died instantly. I happened to be on the trail on another day when a woman was going down the overpass on rollerblades with a toddler in a stroller who fell, and the toddler went flipping out of the stroller. I mean, nevertheless, I loved the trail. My rolling, my rollerblading days are over when I fell and cracked my, broke my cheekbone, did horrible damage to myself. But I love to ride my bike, and I love to walk on the trail, and I'm telling you, I don't know how many cars go up and down Park Boulevard, Ken, but the trail goes right over it. Eighty-sixth Avenue, there was a high school and elementary school not too far away, the ag farm. I mean, it's a part of my life, it's a part of my family's life, and everyone I know goes up and down that trail, day and night, even though you're not supposed to be on it at night, plenty of people are, make believe you're not hearing me, but they are, very safe. And to that, to the safety part, you know, there are many times, Commissioner Gerard, you spoke about linear parks, where there was competition on the trail, runners, bikers, and interestingly enough, the sheriff's department does a great job monitoring the traffic, going back and forth, both ways, going on the trail and those streets that cross over it. So I know the unknown is a little frightening and scary, but I love the trail, and I think the staff has done a yeoman's job putting this project together.
Thank you, Commissioner Long, I'm just gonna, you know, you learn something new every day. Well, I used to rollerblade a lot too, but I didn't wait for an accident to stop, I decided I better quit on my own. But I did use the trail regularly for rollerblading as well. Commissioner Welch.
I'm always following Commissioner Long with some great story. I've never rollerbladed on the trail. But three things that come to mind that are kind of aside, because you talked about not being used at night, and there've been some requests to allow that, to connect business districts, so just something to talk about later. And also, I'd like to know what our policy on scooters and e-bikes is on the trail, or do we have one?
They're on there too, e-bikes.
Right, but, well, I think we need to talk about that. But I agree, I know time is short, but, you know, I really thank the folks from the neighborhood who came and brought their issues, and I think it was, you know, right for us to pause and take a look at it. But I basically agree with Commissioner Eggers on his points. I just can't see how McMullen-Booth works, but I do agree with you, looking at the north side alternative that you mentioned. And also, we mentioned before, I always get nervous when you talk about crossing six lanes, and we talked about what we did at Gibbs, and I know that was funded differently, but we've got that overpass at Nineteen on the trail, and I just can't imagine folks trying to cross US Nineteen without that, so, yeah, Gibbs High.
Point on the nighttime usage that you talked about, yeah, like, there's an inter-local agreement with the county and the city of Dunedin for about a five-block area in their downtown.
So you do it now?
That we maintain it, we have lights on the trail.
Okay.
And in that area, not that they don't go beyond that area, but most of those are working, folks, but during, in that little area in downtown, it's lit and they do use it at night.
Well, and I've heard similar questions.
But it's in a commercial area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, you know, we had the Pure Pinellas, the warehouse district, there's been some discussion about connecting that for nighttime use between that and downtown St. Pete, so those requests are going to be coming.
Chair?
Yes, I just want to recognize Commissioner Eggers, do you want to comment at this point?
Justice?
I mean, Justice, excuse me. You don't look like one another, sorry.
They're kind of blending now.
Commissioner Justice, do you, okay, I'll go back to Commissioner Long then.
I just had a question, I don't know if the staff could consider this or not, but the, you know, when you put an overpass on the trail, there ought to be some way to make it more gradual when you come down on the other side. It's really steep if you're on skates. Well, even if you're walking, it's steep.
The one in Gibbs is not steep, maybe we ought to go over that, ride that together. Yeah, I'll be on my bicycle though, not rollerblading.
I do want to recognize, Kim Craven drove down here from Charlotte, he's with Duke Energy, and I think he'd like to share a few observations with us. But before you do that, I just want to thank Duke for their commitment to this. It was a big deal when we first negotiated the lease, and then a few years it expired, so we had to go back and negotiate, and it took three years to come to conclusion to continue to use the Duke Energy trail and to improve it and construct some more. So I want to thank Duke. They had naming rights because they didn't end up charging us five hundred thousand dollars per year for the use of the Duke easements, so that was about a thirty million dollar gift, so, thank you.
And please pass that along to your local Duke reps down here, because they really appreciate to hear that. It is, good afternoon, Chairman, and committee members, and the public. I have two things I want to, or two sections of my discussion today. The first section is just observation that I want to pass along to you, and then we'll talk about EMF at the very end. But my name is Kim Craven, I'm with, I've been with Duke Energy forty-two years, and I'm subject matter expert on EMF. Typically, you have subject matter, one subject matter expert for the whole company, so I happen to be located in the Carolinas, it could have been anywhere. So I want to discuss some observations that I have about Duke Energy, and it relates to this particular project. As I travel our system, we're in, we have electrical facilities in six states. We're in northern Kentucky, a little bit of northern Kentucky, in the greater Cincinnati area in Ohio, two-thirds of Indiana, and two-thirds of the Carolinas, and the northern half for the most part of Florida. Now, when I, when I travel those areas, I notice Florida is different than the other areas, and they're different from a transmission and distribution design. And the reason I bring this up is that when you have a project like this, and you're using a right-of-way, and you think that this is the only place that you're walking next to a transmission line, in Florida, that is not the case. And it's not, you have this in other states, but it's more, more probability you have it in Florida than anywhere else that I've seen. I'm not talking about the west coast, I'm talking about over here. What you have in urban areas in Florida, and you don't recognize it, but as you walk down the street in older urban areas that developed in the forties, fifties, sixties, and even the seventies, the pole lines you're walking under, we have poles there, the pole lines you're walking under, in many cases, share transmission and distribution. So many places where you travel and work, walk up and down the street in an urban area that have overhead facilities, you're probably, you know, maybe twenty-five to fifty percent of the time walking next to a transmission line or under transmission. You may not recognize it, because it's on just a tall wood pole, and it's not on those, what some people call monster towers, so you don't recognize, but it's the same thing, and I just wanted to point that out. So that's the first part of my presentation. The second part, and I don't have anything to show here, because I didn't know really what the questions were going to be, I want to talk about EMF in specific terms related to what the gentleman said about EMF causing childhood leukemia. Now, this is all based on studies that have been done over fifty years that look by, studies by certain types of scientists, called epidemiologists, it's called studies of epidemiology, and they study humans and agents in their environment. And over fifty years, power line EMF has been studied for health effects. Associations between power line EMF and things like brain cancer, breast cancer, and that's breast cancer in men and women, neurological diseases, all those things, there've been associations, especially in the earlier years of studies, that epidemiologist studies show. Now, epidemiologists do not say that something causes something else, it's not a cause and effect. They look at, they look to see if there's an association, then other scientists will take that to the laboratory and figure out what's going on. They do like a science fair project, and figure out, does this, if I do this, does it cause this? Epidemiologist studies do not do that. So those earlier studies of brain cancer and breast cancer and neurological, more and more of those were done, and the weak association that was there got even weaker and weaker with more studies. All during this time, childhood leukemia was also studied. Now, childhood leukemia is one of the most difficult ones to study for EMF and other things also, not just EMF, because it's a very rare form of cancer. Now, it's a common form of cancer for children, but children don't get cancer very often. But it's one of the rarest forms of cancer. So epidemiologists have struggled with studying EMF and leukemia, and other things related to leukemia, not just EMF. But if you go to an epidemiologist today, epidemiologists that have done any of these studies, and will ask him, does EMF cause cancer? And they say, no, we're not saying that. We're saying that there's an association. An association does not mean cause and effect. And for EMF, EMF has a weak association. And a major study out of England called the Draper Study in two thousand and five came out, and amplified this association, and it became a little bit stronger than a weak association. That was in two thousand and five, looking at cancer cases from the nineteen sixties to nineteen ninety-five. But they, they did the study on those cases, but they published it in two thousand and five. And it showed, it showed an association was there. In two thousand and fourteen, they continued with that study and updated statistics from nineteen ninety-five to two thousand and three, and those associations got weaker and weaker, in some cases went away. So the trouble with studying EMF, and especially childhood leukemia, is the lack of subjects to study and the mobility of the subjects. In the epidemiology studies, when you see something, from an epidemiologist studies, their task is, their ultimate goal is to define a risk, not that something causes something else. Their goal at the very end is to calculate a risk. And that's what people, pre-internet days, and the media caught on to this in pre-internet days, and those, and some of you have lived through the pre-internet days, you have read about EMF and the brain cancers and the breast cancer, you heard that, and still, you know, that is living forever on now on the internet. All you got to do is put it on a PDF and put it over there, and it's there forever. So when somebody says that EMF causes cancer, that has not been concluded by any scientist. And it's at best a weak association right now, and a weak association doesn't mean cause and effect. And really, the only thing being studied now in the marketplace, all the other things, breast cancer, brain cancer, they're not studying that anymore, even though it was a hot item thirty years ago. The only thing they're really doing research on is childhood leukemia, because it's very difficult to study, and we encourage the continued study of that. So that's what I had to say.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for the information and for being here today to address those issues, so I, we really appreciate it.
Could I say one other thing? We have brought scientific literature, not our opinion of anything, we could, we could leave that with you. We have it in the back of the room.
Thank you.
And if you want to put it on the website, we have it on our website, it's a one-page front and back of what science says about EMF. We can leave that with you today.
Thank you, because many years ago, we had one citizen who was very concerned about it, and we talked and talked and talked about it for many years, so having this summary scientific information would be very helpful.
It looks like that, and Felicia has that in the back.
Okay, again, thank you, Mr. Craven.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to conclude, I just want to mention that I lived in countryside area for twenty-one years, and I have personally ridden a bike on McMullen-Booth Road from Tampa Road down to Enterprise, and I only did it once, because it was scary. There's so many commercial businesses, there's so many driveway breaks, you have to be so careful and watchful along that road. So I also support moving forward, I support Commissioner Eggers' idea of looking at Northside Drive, I do think that makes a lot more sense. Again, I'm very familiar with this area, and I think we should perhaps look at an overpass at 580, but I concur with Commissioner Long, if we can reduce the slope, that would be awesome. I'm not going to be rollerblading it ever again, but others will be, so. And the other thing I just want to mention is, you know, this project was in the penny promise starting in the year two thousand. It was also in the penny promise in two thousand and ten, and so here it is, almost two thousand and twenty. And we've promised the public that we would build these projects, and I think we need to honor our promise and move forward with. And I think we need to honor our promise and move forward with this plan. So again, we do thank the citizens for being here today and for sharing your concerns and comments. It does matter a great deal to us, what you have to say. Commissioner Eggers?
Just for the next steps, so we're kind of giving consensus direction today to staff. Is there a contract that we have to sign off on? And they're going to bring it back to a commission meeting?
I think Ken mentioned that. And that there will be a contract that'll be coming back.
We're currently in the process of receiving the guaranteed maximum price for the contractor. Once we get that reviewed and finalized, we'll bring it to the board through an agenda item for approval. Am I hearing that you're requesting to go with the Northside Drive? And if, I will take that back to the contractor and proceed in that direction unless I hear something that would cause an issue. And I'll bring that back to Barry and let him know.
Okay. Excellent. I want to thank both Scott Daniels, who's the president of Pinellas Trails, and I want to thank Brian Smith, who is really the father of Pinellas Trails, for being here today as well. So with that...
If I can just ask one clarification. Was it the direction of the commission to look at Northside Drive and come back to you or proceed with Northside Drive?
I think to proceed with Northside Drive unless there's really strong impediments that come up in studying it that then you go, whoa, you know, timeout.
So we'll look at that, and then we'll bring it back to you for further discussion and with a contract.
No, I don't think you need to bring it back unless there's problems with moving it to Northside. Okay. Right? Okay. All right. We're going to take a quick break. We still have two agenda items to discuss. And thank you again to everyone. Quick break. I got to try...
John Maroney. So, thank you Commissioner Justice for offering both the history lesson of naming and we have the naming rights policy, but it is a policy decision by this board as to how you, if you want to honor the process that they had there and/or the, you know, five years that you have to have passed away before naming rights could come forward. We have already not followed this policy recently, so, but we did provide a copy just for your information. So, I'll turn it over to you Commissioner Justice.
Thank you Madam Chair. And I wanted to show that on the map, there's really not a hard and fast tradition or countywide history. I mean, and I didn't even include all of the different namings that St. Petersburg College has done for Congressman Young, Congressman Villaracas, the other Congressman Villaracas, Senator Jones, and those kind of things. So, but I think the five year is a good framework so that you have time after someone passes, you get through the emotional part of it, you get through any of that kind of surprises that may come. But I also don't want to go so far that we kind of lose sight of the importance and the impact of our colleagues. So, that's why I, on the one-year anniversary, it really started getting me to think. And the four suggestions I have are just suggestions for the start of the conversation. And I did communicate with Eileen and ask if there was something that he ever talked about or joked about that he may have wanted. And she really didn't have a specific thing that she trusted us to make the right decision. So, the four items are, the four potentials are listed there, but really they're just kind of conversation starters. And I don't have a personal favorite. I think the more I thought about the Assembly Room, that was very much a Tallahassee thing. It's tradition in the Capitol to name meeting rooms after people who've had an impact. The facility out on Ormerton kind of struck me, but really, I don't have a one up here that I'm really pushing. I think, I just wanted to, we haven't had a chance as a body to talk about it, so looking forward to hear your comments.
Okay. Thank you. You identified what I thought were four good ideas. I personally like the Sun Star, the county building on Ormerton Road. I think that that memorializes John's commitment to the first responders. We have the public that attends events there as well, and I think it would be quite a nice opportunity to remember John in that way. Others?
I would agree. I think, whoops. That was silly. Okay. Well, I think that, I like the idea of it being visible and it being connected to emergency management or first responder stuff. So, I like it. The Ormerton.
I do like that one. I was kind of leaning towards the Assembly Room because it's just, to me, it just spoke to John's affability and how he got along with people and every time somebody, people come up to him all the time and it just was a center of our activities and his activities. And so, I kind of liked that one. There's some, I was talking to somebody and they said, "Well, what happens if we, you know, get a new building and move?" And I don't want to be having to come up with a new location. So, I like the one that you, that we're talking about as well.
Well, it is 112. I like them all. Thank you Commissioner Justice for your leadership on this. I like them all. I like the 911 call center, just because his lunches and then dinner started because of the call issue and Officer Tackett. It just kind of resonated with me, but I can go with any of them. I think it's a great idea. So, I'll go with the will of the body.
I thought about the 911, but I didn't think it was as visible to the public. And that was one of Charlie's cons, and so that's why I tended towards the Sun Star.
That one requires to take steps to publicize it. So, I get that part of it.
Okay. Commissioner Justice, you brought it up. Are you okay?
I think, like I said, the 911 center came from previous conversations over the last year or so, but the more we thought about it, I kind of split between the Assembly Room because like in my comments, I said, "I don't know anyone who loved being a Commissioner more than John did." But I think to fit with being public facing and his commitment to first responders, the Sun Star building makes a lot of sense.
Okay. Then we will move forward with that. Thank you all very much. We will try to, we know others have appointments, but again, thank you Commissioner Justice. This is going to be really a special thing. We will do, have a special recognition ceremony of some type when it's ready to be renamed, and we'll definitely honor that wonderful legacy of that man.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. County Administrator's six-month review. Can't believe it's really been October, eight months.
Eight months.
Eight months and counting.
Thank you.
So, last evening, I reviewed everybody's comments and their reviews. I think some thought it was, you know, it was part of the contract to do the six-month review, and so I think we're still in the learning stage in that first year of the county administrator's service. But as the chairman, you know, I probably, I probably don't have that much more interaction with Barry, but I have to tell you that I have been extremely impressed. His reach out to the public, his relationship with, relationship building with all of our partners, including the cities, our citizens, his responsiveness when there's an issue. I get a phone call. I doesn't wait till that weekly meeting or every other week meeting that I used to have with other county administrators. I get a phone call, and I just really appreciate that responsiveness. I think Barry has also brought a strong business acumen in looking at matters in a different way, which I find to be very refreshing. And so, with that, you'll see the compilation of the ratings, and we appreciate anybody's comments.
And I have nothing in my mouth. I just wanted to say that I, I think I have the lowest ratings on there, and that was not indicative of what I think of Barry's performance because I think he's moved us forward in a lot of ways. It had to do with the length of time, so I think he's doing a great job.
And you actually mentioned that in your written review, so I, but it's nice that you brought that up. Commissioner Eggers?
Well, I've just been very happy with Barry since he's been here, whether it's on the personal interaction that we have in our one-on-ones or how he, how he, how he works with, with his staff. But I think the thing that I have just, I can't tell you how much I appreciate the change, is the interaction that I now am able to have with staff very comfortably, very freely, and to the extent that I continue honoring the commitment that we made, and that is interaction, education, discussion, and not direction. That's not my job to do. But it's been just so good on so many levels, I can't tell you. And so, so whether there are presentations in the, in some of the areas that I represent or other areas that I've gone to, having conversation with, with the employees has just been second to none for me. So, I'd say there's a lot of things I could talk about, but for me, that, that and the, kind of the holistic approach that he has, he has brought to the transportation issue, when you, not just about wheels, it's not just about roads, it's about affordable housing. It's about all of the things kind of mixed together. I think those two things and how we're moving that, those two pieces forward for me have just been wonderful. But overall, I've just been very happy after six months. Thank you Barry.
Commissioner Justice and Commissioner Welch.
Thank you Madam Chair. I think Commissioner Gerard and those of us that used a lot of twos, if you read the actual description, it says consistently and occasionally exceed. So, it's not just a C, it's a, kind of still feeling out on the timeline, I think is really the big thing. I echo everyone else's comments. Incredibly pleased with our decision, the ability to grasp the complex situations that we're in at a quick level, to really focus on Lealman, I think has really been, sorry. Commissioner Eggers was really concerned that you wouldn't understand Lealman, so...
At 115.
It's that competition with...
So, but, and I think really, you, in the administrative world, there's a lot of folks that have the technical skills and the intellectual abilities, but also I feel that we have administrator who has the heart for the things that we're doing, and that's critically important as well.
Good things are worth working for, and we had to work to get you here. But I couldn't be more elated, as my colleagues have said, just the relationship building. You hear about that all throughout the community and from employees who come up to you. Really moving in a good direction. You're everywhere in the county, and I think you bring a fresh set of eyes, and the way you approach the issues kind of builds a level of trust from all the folks that are involved in it. So, I couldn't be more elated, and this had nothing to do with your evaluation, but for us to get Barry and Jill, for you to go out and, I mean, best of all worlds, and just incredible move forward for the county. I think it's the first time Dave Eggers has ever rated an administrator higher than I have. Ever.
You know, you're right.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Welch?
My comments are pretty well reflected in my written, what I wrote about.
Thank you Commissioner Gerard. My, my comments are all reflected in my written evaluation, and I really do believe that when we, given that we do the annual one, we'll have a much different score. These, I mean, I do think that the lack of it being higher than it is, is a reflection of the time, and that we haven't had an opportunity to go through the entire cycle. So, I look forward to that.
All right. Very good. Well, Barry has provided us with a term sheet to change certain parts of his contract. The only one that I will mention is Section 5E. If we change this, then I will be bringing to the County Attorney Oversight Committee the same change for Joel, because we...
On the front page?
Number three, which is the 457 plan.
Got you. Okay.
He's asking that it be changed to what we've done previously for some other, for Bob LaSalle, which was in Jim Bennett as well, which is the maximum allowed under law. And so, if we do make that change, then I believe, like I said, I'm going to bring forth the same change out of fairness to Joel. So, any feedback on this? Commissioner Gerard?
Can somebody just refresh my memory about what that is? I should know. Was that 28? I know, but what's the percentage?
Twenty-two, five?
Twenty-four thousand, I think.
Oh, twenty-four thousand. Oh, twenty-four thousand, okay.
I was thinking it was like 28 percent, and I was going to say no.
It's a dollar cap.
By IRS rules, it is locked at 24,000 or 24,500?
It's one of the two. It changes each year, but it's, it's right around...
As you get older, you have the catch-up provision.
And that's reflective of the catch-up provision. So, this is the maximum.
So, I have a question. Are we saying that we're entertaining moving it from 15,000 annually to 25,000? Is that what we're saying?
Correct. Correct. That would be, so the way we had structured this was that there was a six-month evaluation. So, this in essence would provide a little over 3% at the six-month evaluation, and then for henceforth, at the same time in the amount that other employees get, plus the time for vacation.
May I follow up? Well, I'm not sure how I feel about that, since I just have seen it today. What I am sure I feel is that we have not completed our first budget cycle, and there was one thing that I heard clearly when we had our workshop last week, I think it was, that if we continue spending the way we are spending now, we're going to be in big trouble, number one. Number two, we have already authorized a change in the way we've done things by giving the county administrator the authority to add more dollars into our recruitment process. And I would just like to be able to get through the budget cycle and know that we're going to be solid with our potential changes, because whatever we do here, as Commissioner Seal just said, I would not be in favor of unless we carried it right over into the county attorney's contract as well.
Commissioner Welch?
I'm supportive of both. I think we're in such a good position now that $10,000, 20,000, I don't know where Joel is and hers, is well worth it in the big, 2.2 billion dollar budget. I'm supportive of both.
And let me be clear, the first one is simply that he is treated like any other exempt employee, which would include any pay raises. So, if we did a 3% for the rest of the employees, that would be the same for him, which is essentially what we did for Mark. So, it's just, that's clarified.
So, I just had a question about...
Commissioner Gerard?
That, so does that mean he gets one now or October 1st?
It would be October 1st. Just like any other employee.
So, we only have the two exempt employees that we deal with, correct? That's my point.
And Dustin.
Well, I heard you say, I thought I heard you say, "Just like any other exempt employees," and I wondered who else we were talking about besides Barry.
Well, we have all exempt, all exempt employees are eligible for a raise, but it's at the budget year.
But we're not talking about all the exempt employees receiving this 501?
No, no, no. Just, just that...
I'm just making sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah, the intent, the intent is that if other exempt employees receive a raise, then I will be treated the same.
And if I could add, some of the special provisions, including the 457 contribution, is not something that's even eligible for employees that do not have a contract. And the only employees, to my knowledge, that have a contract is the county administrator and myself.
Commissioner Eggers?
Well, first of all, I mean, I don't, I really don't want to look at this stuff until we're at a year. That's, that's my feeling. I, you know, and I'd like to make sure that when we do the year review, that we do it on the day, or out in the Assembly Room and not, you know, not in a workshop. So, I just want to make sure that's the case. I'm really okay with maybe adjusting at some point that number three, but I have real heartburn looking at number two and making it more than a 10-year employee. I'm sure he has been an employee and gathered some of those benefits in its previous location, and quite frankly, we've given him the benefit of being a 10-year employee, being here six months. At this point, I wouldn't want to even talk about that, but I wouldn't want to address any of this stuff until the one-year anniversary for me.
Commissioner Justice?
Well, some interesting thoughts, and I'm kind of, I guess, maybe in the middle on that, but my question is that I don't even know what our range is right now, and would those 3% at some point, would bump up to the top of the range?
Actually, it would. If, when this 3% in October 1st, it would bump up to the top of the range.
But if I could add, the exempt pay plan, which is where that range comes from, is something that's established by the Board of County Commissioners, so you have the, you are free to adjust that. And I know that also you all are aware, the pay and class study is ongoing right now, so that may make, and I'm not sure what it recommends honestly to that pay range, but it is your exempt pay plan, so you can change it.
Yeah, at some, and I think I mentioned this during the deliberations, was that at some point, we'll hit a range that causes a lot of discomfort for me. I don't know what that magic number is yet, but it sounds like we may be hitting it at some point soon.
So, I'm hearing mixed reactions. Do you want to wait until you started October?
End of October.
End of October to make the final recommendations at that point?
I think we should wait.
I see two, wait.
I'm just putting in, but we won't talk about it.
I think that's actually, thank you Commissioner Gerard, I think that's a smart plan. Why don't we go ahead and budget for it, but officially review it, I would say October, very early October, since we start a budget year in October 1st. Or we could do it in September, which would be probably more realistic as we're going and finishing up our budget hearings. If we're going to go ahead and include it in the budget, then we should go ahead and memorialize it. So, if you're okay with that, then we will bring this back at a meeting in September. I know that's before the one year, but then that gives us a little bit more time.
It's close enough. It's close enough.
Okay. You all right with that?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Well, you all, thank you for a very productive day. I am pleased with everything we accomplished and appreciate each and every one of you. So, thanks.
Great meeting.
Okay.